With you who are on the line, thank you for joining us. We are going to, I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education. I've looked on the public comment and I do not see any public comments regarding closed session items. Given that, we will recess to closed session and then the board will return to open session to hear the remainder of the topics at 7:00 PM. And that's the same line for those of you who have joined us this afternoon now. We'll be back at 7:00 PM. Thank you so much and we will see you then. Thank you. *9. To request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item, you will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. So that's the way that it's going to work tonight. And individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. So just so you're aware, you'll have a three-minute clock. And there are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item, but with board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. So just so that you're all aware on the line, I do see that we are joined by many of our community tonight. So welcome. And this meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. So I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Amati to start us off tonight.
Thank you so much. I wanted to just say that because we knew we have a lot of wonderful community members interested, Amy did her magic again and figured out a way if just for this time to actually up us to 3,000. So we should be fine. And thank you, Amy. Let me get started by, we have a presentation for you tonight. I want to start by really reminding everybody that this is, as we have talked about, unprecedented, unpredictable pandemic. And I think once we really look at all of the things that we've been dealing with the last few months and hearing what we are hearing moving forward, it kind of, it humbles us. So there are very, I mean, there are so many unique circumstances that every family faces, every organization, every person during this time, and there are lots of difficulties that people are facing. And we as public educators in public education have a really important role in supporting our students, our families, our community and our staff and really just globally, everything that every one of us does impacts a whole lot of other things. We have and we will continue to work directly and closely with the Department of Public Health. For example, on today's call, we have a call every Thursday, but we are also, they're also available to us anytime if I have a question. And we talked about, they really reminded us of the importance of getting students back to school and the difficulties that students are having just in general for not being in school. If nothing else, I have to say, what has happened with this pandemic has taught us the value of human connection, the value of public education. Because I think, you know, maybe in the past we would say, wouldn't it be nice? Everybody could just learn online and everybody would just be fine and everything is technology. Technology is fabulous, but technology doesn't replace human connection and the wonderful job that our staff and our teachers and custodians and office staff and our principals do. So tonight, we're talking about two options that families have because we want to make sure that we meet as many needs as possible. And I really want to thank the planning groups, the teachers, the staff, the principals, administrators who've been involved in this. I want to thank the families for giving us a lot of great questions and feedback. So the options that we're giving you are for consideration tonight. There are lots of other details that we are figuring out and we're working on, lots and lots. But until we have a plan that we're looking at, it's not as easy to work on all of those different pieces. So that's why it's important for us, it's been really important for us to get to this point where we can then move forward and put all of those things in place. So just, so I will let you know what we're going to cover in other areas later on, but lots of details that we're working on. And I also want to start us by saying, I know that we've read the questions and comments that people have sent in. I know there were questions about the date for the, for moving into hybrid and all of that. I want to say, one of the most important things I want to remind us of that is that we have to be flexible when it comes to pivoting back and forth from different models depending on health condition. Right? And so, and if you remember, when we get started with the presentation, I'll go on some of the things that that are really important for us to remember from legislation that was passed. So the date that we have in there is approximate, but we really have to think about some some date, some timeline, so that we can actually put this plan together and say, so for so many weeks, we're going to do this and then we're going to move to this hybrid. And then when we need to, we move back, but we have tried both, we know how to do both, we have trained people, we have trained our students, we have, our staff feels really, feel really confident. So that date could move back based on what happens in our conversation with the health department. So we will work with that. At that, before that time, we will do that. We will go over our plan with the, with the health department again to make sure. And then we'll look at cases, we'll look at their guidance. Again, it's important for us to be able to pivot. And with that, I, what I would like to do, before I turn it over to our team, there are a couple of slides. Amy, if you could come to the next slide. Before we, I go over this, I want to say, just kind of share the process with you tonight. So we will be presenting and halfway through, there is a slide that says question. Those, that's time for the board to ask clarifying questions. And then we'll do the rest of the presentation with more clarifying questions for the board to ask, any clarifying questions they have. And then after that, I will add just a couple of things to wrap us up. Then, once that's finished, we will have public comments from people who have raised their hands. And after we hear the comments, then there will be a motion and a second, and then of course, discussion by the board and the rest of the process, which is, you know, consideration of approval. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows how this is going to go. So I put our principles down here that you have seen before. Again, safety, number one, our first priority. And the fact that we'll monitor and remain in compliance with all of the guidelines and regulations that we have. We'll follow phased-in approach as we've talked about and then be able to pivot and flex. Next. So just, just a couple of reminders, there are mandates that we have and there are guidance that we have from the county public health department. Again, we're working with them closely. Those are all recommendations are based on public health data. And they actually have been very, very helpful to us in giving us some time to figure out what our plans look like. Mandates that we have under law, SB Senate Bill 98 that passed, trailer bills that passed with the Budget Act that said that we need to have in place. There will also be guidance that may come from the public health officer that at times that would basically tell us, you know, you need to shut down at this point. That's not what we are hearing. Next slide. So this is from Senate Bill 98. As you know, on June 26th, the legislature passed the state budget act with several bills, as I said. And just to remind everybody, SB 98 adds Education Code Section 43500 through 504 containing detailed information, there are pages and pages that we've read. But basically, the comment, the gist of it is that school districts shall offer in-person instruction and may offer distance learning pursuant to the requirement of Education Code 43502. And again, districts shall offer in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible. Also, they had information on distance learning, that it's allowed under these two circumstances. And there's also a lot of information on what distance learning and in-person learning would look like. Again, a lot of other details around attendance and grading and all of that, that we'll cover some of. Next slide. These are just slides that we had shared with you before. So I won't spend much time going over them as they have been posted and they've been available to you. But this is the, this is when we ask questions of community members about what options they would like to have. Next slide. And I'm not going to read them. This was for elementary. I went over all of these in detail last time. And then next slide is secondary. That's great. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ryman. Before we do that, I want to say, I know there are lots of questions about safety and procedures. We will, we have lots of details to work through and we are absolutely, that's our number one priority. Once we have the plan, we've already been working on it. So there will be a lot of information that will come your way, not only in presentations in the future, but also information we're going to continue to communicate with you. So I know I'm asking for a lot of patience and I thank you for that. You have been extremely patient. And if you just, we appreciate your questions and then we'll make sure that our FAQs that are on our website, we will update soon so that you have some of that information. But safety, I know, is on top of everyone's mind. That is something that we're going to give you more information later on. Dr. Ryman.
Thank you Superintendent Amati. I appreciate that information. As Superintendent Amati indicated earlier, this has been a very complex process that's involved a lot of people. The information that we're sharing tonight is the result of planning committees that have worked throughout the past several months, including teachers, counselors, administrators, other certificated staff as well. Dozens on the elementary group, here you see listed. And next slide, please. And even dozens more working on the secondary group as well. So this has truly been a collective effort by dozens of people. Next slide, please. That has taken place over the last several months. So beginning in the spring, both of the elementary and the secondary planning committees began meeting and considering information from themselves, but also bringing in information from parent groups through the, through the parent survey, other staff members through the staff survey, consulting with parent groups such as presenting information and getting input from the parent leadership, parent leadership advisory committee. And then also making sure to bring in all the latest best information from the Alameda County Department of Health, Alameda County Office of Education and the California Department of Education. Next slide, please. And so what those two committees have arrived at are recommendations that are broken up into two pieces. What you'll be getting, having presented tonight are two options, a pre-K through 12 main option as well as an alternative option. For the presentation of the main option, you'll see a phased approach in which Phase 1 will involve virtual learning along with in-person supports for our students with disabilities and other students with specific needs and supports. That would take place from August 13th through September 11th. Then there will be time for clarifying questions from the board, followed by a presentation of Phase 2, which is our blended learning options for elementary and for secondary. That would start on September 14th. As Superintendent Amati indicated before, those dates are the dates we are using as of now. The planning committees are still continuing to meet. We're still continuing to get more information and will be responsive. Also, you'll be hearing about an alternative option. At the elementary level, this looks like full year 100% remote learning. At the elementary level, it will look like Castro Valley Virtual Pathway, which is an elementary program that's being designed specifically in response to this need. At the secondary level, we already have the Castro Valley Virtual Academy. We're making adjustments and expanding that program so that it can accommodate more, but you'll hear more detail about that tonight. But also moving forward, additional details, as Superintendent Amati explained earlier, will be forthcoming concerning all of these options. Next slide, please. Also, as we move through the presentation, there will be a few key terms. These are lots of terms, so I'll spend time just looking at a few of them. The first being synchronous activities. Synchronous activities are synchronous learning. Those are the activities and the types of instruction in which a teacher is live and in real time presenting information, interacting with students, guiding them through lessons. This, examples of this could be social emotional supports, could be first direct instruction, could be reviewing and reteaching, or it could be live interventions. You'll also hear about asynchronous activities and asynchronous instruction. Asynchronous instruction are the activities in a learning where lessons are prepared ahead of time and students complete those lessons independent of the teacher and/or a staff member. This allows flexibility in terms of timing, in terms of when, where and how students may complete these activities. This could include instruction of concepts, practice, and all of those activities that would take place while the teacher may be teaching live instruction to another cohort. And thirdly, looking at social emotional learning. Over the past couple of years, if you've been coming to board meetings, which I know the board members have been, you've heard a lot about social emotional learning, social emotional supports from us. This is learning that focuses on emotional supports, helping with behaviors and positive behaviors and other social skills. In addition to that, our social emotional learning in this context includes anti-bias lessons and helps to make sure that we have a self, a safe and welcoming environment for everyone. So those are really the key terms, but we also hope that you'll take a moment. If you already have the board packet and you're unfamiliar with any of these terms, especially the public. If you haven't, if you're a parent or a community member, you may, you may not be. So we wanted to provide those to you. Next slide. So as we move into our next phase, I want to introduce a few key people. First of which is Nia Rashishi, our Director of Education for Elementary. Vivian Peratur, our Director of Education for Secondary. And Suzie Williams, our Director of Special Education. And without further ado, Ms. Rashishi.
Thank you, Dr. Ryman, and good evening, everybody. I want to reiterate that the elementary and secondary planning teams have worked really diligently to, Amy, they've done so much research and looking at webinars and having deep discussions and doing a lot of planning. Super committed people that I'm really proud to call myself a part of the elementary team. We did some good work and the recommendations are, as Dr. Ryman said, we're recommending a phased-in approach. And it starts with the main option where we're starting with Phase 1, virtual learning. And then transitioning into Phase 2 in an AMPM blended learning model. And we want to really, tonight, we'll talk about how we've kind of upped our virtual learning game from the past two and a half months where we had for last school year. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And then last but not least, the alternative option, which is a full year of 100% remote learning, where we know in some of the feedback that we've gotten from some of our families is that we really, some families are just feeling like, you know what? I want 100% remote learning all year long and that's what I want to do. And so we, we are, we are building, this is new at the elementary level for us. And, and we thought, well, let's then provide that option. So we're going to. And we're also proud of that particular piece. So next slide. And then the secondary team also came up with a phased-in approach. The main option, again, very aligned to the elementary team, starting with virtual learning and then transitioning Phase 2 into a choice, really, tonight for the board, to look at the blended learning AB model or the 10-4 model. And then again, an alternative learning option with CVVA, which most people are familiar with, that has been around for a while. Next slide. So one of the main questions that we get is, what does it look like? Next slide. And before we jump specifically into what it looks like, we wanted to talk a little bit about, I said a little bit earlier, how we've kind of upped our virtual, built our virtual muscle. If you all remember that in mid-May, excuse me, mid-March of last school year, we were really asked to transition a brick and mortar system fully into a virtual learning system. And so it was a lot of emergency planning, a lot of teachers went, did an amazing job of really taking a system that's been in place for quite a long time and transitioning that to a virtual environment. It wasn't perfect, but we did a lot of good work. But that was emergency planning. We've now transitioned into, had some time to do some more strategic planning and up our virtual game. So part of that planning involved partnering with Modern Teacher to increase our proficiency and our consistency. Modern Teacher is an organization that works with school districts to help build systems to seamlessly transition between brick and mortar and virtual learning and then back again. And so we have done some partnership with Modern Teacher to start continuing to build our muscle. Part of that learning has been to provide some professional development for our staff on virtual instruction. And with going through modules this summer, like architecting a digital learning environment and architecting a blended online lesson block foundation, what does that look like? What does it feel like? How do we become more engaging in a virtual setting? Also, we've done a lot of instructional technology professional learning with our staffs. The Google Suite has become a big friend of ours. Google Suite includes Google Meets, Google Classroom and Google Docs. So, and then a little bit of a new phase, some of the feedback that we got from our families were, you know what? We're really asking you to step up and be our, continue to be our good partners, but we need some help on that. And we also need to build our skill in the Google Suite. Not for everybody, because we know that some people already have that skill. But we are going to be starting in the month of, this month, to provide professional learning to our families on how to use Google Classroom, on how to use Google Docs and on how to use Google Meets. So that we're all becoming more proficient together. And then last but not least, we have a partnership with Alameda County Office of Education where we're doing some research, going to put some piloting in place and then select eventually sometime during this school year, a learning management system that will hold our teaching and learning assessment and accountability system in one place from a comprehensive perspective. So we're not there yet, but we're working on getting there. Next slide. And so again, just a few things to point out as far as we were building our virtual muscle. We, you'll see in the schedules that you see recommended for tonight, that there is now daily virtual live instruction on a daily basis, that there is a consistent schedule across our elementary schools. Families asked for that so that they could help again to be partners, better partners in this work. That there is a summer work group constructing a synchronous playlist. That has been an immense amount of work this, this summer. We've had grade levels and departments and our social emotional work groups of teachers really working hard on creating asynchronous, which, you know, virtually, basically virtual lesson plans that include a similar cadence that follows, learn about it, practice it, and then evidence of learning. So you'll hear more about that tonight. And then last, I won't read all of these to you, but just the expectation that all of our teachers will be synchronously learning for, with synchronous learning will be provided for every student. So more to come on that, but next slide. Okay, so again, now what does it look like at the elementary level? There's two big chunks in the day. You've got synchronous learning, which is that live and direct instruction that the teacher is doing directly with our students. And that's a big chunk of time in the morning time. And then you have on the other side of the afternoon, asynchronous learning, which again, Dr. Ryman went over those definitions. Asynchronous meaning the student is doing learning independent of the general ed teacher. And, and we'll talk more about that in this next slide. And here's the actual schedule of what it looks like. So I'll go over this Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 11:00 o'clock. A day in the life, this is a student schedule, so this is from the student perspective. Teacher would be doing a social emotional check-in, "Good morning, everyone. I'm so glad to see you." There might be some type of enrichment activity, like a guest speaker or some type of virtual study trip. And just checking on, you know, how everybody's doing for the day. That's about 20 minutes. And then there's kind of directions for the day, here's what we're going to be doing today. And then there's a two-hour block there where we're teaching, reviewing, reteaching and providing intervention, where the teacher again is working live, live with our students, either whole group or in small group rotations, depending on what students need. But that's a two-hour trunk to work on math and reading language arts. And then of course, we have our designated English learner support for our English learners. That's, that's specific time set aside to do that work. So that's the morning in a nutshell. And then we move, after those three hours, students will move into their asynchronous time at the bottom of, bottom half of the page. And you see that instruction review of concepts through video and then practice activities. So again, that's that, there's a video of learning a new concept, that's that, learn about it. And then practice it. There are some skills and activities that we're asking students to carry out. And then there's an evidence of learning piece that kind of like show what you know. Tell us, did you get it or didn't you get it? So that when we're reviewing the teaching live, we can know where students need help. Okay, and then after that part, we have the specialists kick in. And we have our RTI specialists that are working with those students who are most in need. And then we have our single subject specialists, our PE teachers, our science teachers, our music teachers and our counselors who are going to help with that social emotional anti-bias curriculum. That kicks in, those folks kick in with our students in that afternoon time. And in a nutshell, that's Monday through Thursday. For Friday, it looks similar, but there's a little bit more time in the morning time. So we'll go back to that synchronous activity on Friday. We've got that social emotional check-in, enrichment activity and directions for the day. But we have a little bit of a longer period of time to do that on Friday. And we have our designated English learner support time. And then we get into two pockets of time with the student where a student is, a teacher is checking in with either one-on-one or one-on-small-group students to intervene where they're seeing that maybe a student is having some challenges someplace and we really want to work on those challenges in a small group setting. And then also providing some time, office hours with parents. Parents have a question about a lesson, not sure about a certain activity or project, and there's time set aside on the schedule to make sure that parents have a chance to check in with teachers. And then in the afternoon time, again, we have that continuous practice where students are in that asynchronous time, finishing up activities for the week, and then also the specialist kick in again, working with our students. So that in a nutshell is the main option, Phase 1 of our virtual learning. That's the description there. Next slide. And then we wanted to make sure that we did, we said, you know, sometimes we questions about, so when our students are in that asynchronous learning in the afternoon, what are our teachers doing? And they've got a lot on their plate. There's a lot of learning that we still need to do. There's a lot of preparation that we still need to do to make sure that our virtual learning is spot on, that our virtual teaching and learning work continues to be finely tuned and tweaked. So you see preparing learning materials and activities, reviewing and providing feedback on student practice. Our teachers need time to do that. Our grading system is going to be back up and running and checking for understanding. We're going to include those concepts back into our virtual environment. Supporting our parents, again, you saw office hours on Friday. We have office hours built in for teachers to work with parents Monday through Friday. And then we of course, want to make sure that our teachers always have time to have collaboration, work with their grade level teams. collaboration, work with their grade-level teams, and then continue to professionally develop. That's Monday through Thursday. On Fridays, we've built in staff meeting time and professional learning communities, that's what PLC means. Again, more collaboration time. We need our grade levels to be working together, continuing to build that virtual muscle, continuing to build together in a collaborative way the lessons that we want our students to have. There's principal office hours, there's more prep time, and then some formal professional development that will either be specifically at the site or from a district-wide perspective. So that's kind of the teacher's schedule in the afternoon. They're teaching live in the morning, and then in the afternoon, these are the activities that they're carrying out. Okay, next slide. So, Phase One continued. One of the things that our teachers really wanted to do is to make sure that we get to know our students from the very beginning of the school year. And so we have talked about, you know, organizing those small, a small in-person student-teacher meet-and-greets, building, so that we can build relationships with our students, that we can explain the cadence, how is the general flow of the day going to run, so that they really understand that, and that our families understand that as well. We will carry out some of the academic and social-emotional assessments. We really think it's important from the beginning of the year that we get a real feel for where our students ended up at the end of the 1920 school year. So, we want to make sure that we carry out some assessments from the beginning of the year, and know exactly where we're starting from with all our students. And then we also, again, want to provide some additional technology training for our parents. They've asked for that, and we're going to be responsive to that and make sure that that happens. And as Superintendent Amati said, you know, can we do this in person? Will be used being the guide of Alameda County Health Department to determine whether that can be in person, or, you know, do we have to transition to that being virtual? But no matter what, our teachers were very emphatic about making sure that we are getting to know our students at the very beginning of the year. Next slide. Okay, and then I'm going to hand it off to my colleague, Ms. Vivian Perator, to talk about the secondary work.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So, this shows our Option One, which is complete on Phase One, our secondary virtual instruction. So, all the instruction is done virtually, with the exception of some students who will physically come to school to receive intervention services, counseling help, or help with accessing online instruction, or to get materials and books. So, some students will come to school in small groups to receive those services. Next slide, please. And this is a visual representation of what our schedule will look like. So, this is a sample schedule, and the times may vary slightly, but from school to school. However, this represents a consistent schedule of synchronous instruction. So, the synchronous instruction is in the morning, with the remainder of the day being asynchronous learning. It's going to be also an intervention and advisory period. We will stop after Mrs. Williams' presentation for questions on Phase One. It's my pleasure to introduce the Director of Special Education, Mrs. Suzy Williams, with the next slide, please.
Hello, everyone, and thank you so much. We have been working very closely with both the secondary and elementary teams to ensure that we're following the same pattern as them. So, for the majority of our, about 1,100 students in special education, the majority of them are fully included in general education, and as such, will be participating in the plans that you just heard presented. So, they will be doing both the virtual learning and the blended learning. You can see what was presented in the plan is that there are designated times for our direct service providers, our individuals, such as our speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, behaviorists. And for those related services, we will be working to provide those, delivering them both remotely and in person. So, they will be delivered even for our students who are fully included in general education in person to the greatest extent possible. And that is because those, again, will be following current health and safety guidelines. For a group of our students, about 150 of our students who are involved in our special-day classes, we know that it's very important to get these students back into school as soon as possible. They have been receiving virtual instruction, but we know for many of the, much of the curriculum, many of the activities that they do on a daily basis, that it's important for them to receive instruction in person. So, our goal will be small-group instruction. Most of the classes are already fairly small in size, but we will be following guidelines in terms of the number of individuals in the classrooms, including the staff that will be present. There will be small-group instruction and some modified days in the beginning as we bring everything back into place. Obviously, for any of our students who are medically fragile or immunocompromised, we will also be able to offer a virtual instruction for them based specifically on their IEPs and how that can be delivered for them. So, next slide, please. So, the specific classes that we're talking about, you can see at both the elementary and secondary level. And these are our students that we know will benefit greatly from having in-person instruction on a daily basis. And so you can see that we have approximately six mild mod classes and seven, what we call mod severe classes. And so, we will, at the elementary level, and then at the secondary level, you can see we have nine of our mild SDC and six mod severe classes. Again, those classes span from preschool through our adult transition program. And as I mentioned before, for these students, we will be bringing them back in for in-person instruction as soon as possible and allowed, per regulations that we have for health and safety. We've been working with teams to make sure that we have everything in place to have the students back on campus, and also, to the greatest extent possible, following the programs for our general ed students that will allow for, when the time comes, our students to be able to begin participating in their mainstreaming classes and, as permitted, their community-based instruction classes, which are very important to our students. And as we spoke about before, there'll be a time for any further questions. We do have work groups that will be convening next week that will include our teachers, so that we can get planning and get information around schedules, dates, and times out to our parents as soon as possible. So, thank you very much, and I'll be turning this back over to my colleagues now.
Well, I have, as we get started, ICU Dot, I just wanted to say something before we get started. Wanted to thank everybody for all of their work on this and realizing that we understand how impossible this is. And also wanting to recognize all of the comments that we received from a varied group of parents, teachers, staff, and community members, and empathize that they're all coming from different places of need, dealing with so many other things. We're collectively dealing with an awful situation. And so I want to thank everybody for their comments, and I want to thank the team for working so great with the unions, and I want to thank the unions for working so great with the district. I think that this is amazing, the work that you've been able to do together, and I applaud you for the great relationship that you've developed together and how you work well together. So, thank you for that. I do have further questions, but I do want to let the board ask their questions. So, I'll go to Dot and then to Jill.
So, I have, well, at least two questions. One, what is the parent technology training going to look like? Is it going to be led by the classroom teacher? Is it going to be led by someone campus-wide? So that's my first question. And then, for parents who, so we're starting the school year virtually. For parents who want to stay 100% virtual, will they be attached to a classroom? Will they have that kind of community connection, or will they, you know, be in their virtual world?
So, go ahead.
So, I was just going to say, and Nia and Vivian can probably say more than I could in detail about the elementary and secondary plans. But first of all, some of those pieces are still being developed in terms of the details. But in terms of overview, the plan is for, at the secondary level, students would be enrolled at CVVA. For those students, they are enrolled in an actual program with teachers who are teaching those courses, who they would interact with on a regular basis. Weekly basis is the standard for CVVA right now, as well as for elementary. The plan would be for daily live interaction via the internet with a teacher. So they would be enrolled in a class with a teacher, they would see a teacher live, not in person, but live via the internet each day. And I don't know, Nia and Vivian, if you wanted to add more to that?
No, I think you covered it. I mean, and we do, we do have some information on that for the next phase, but yeah, in general, that is the plan.
So, I just wanted to follow up and clarify. So, the elementary students whose families choose to be 100% virtual for the whole school year will be associated with a classroom? And when the rest of the school comes into Phase Two, they will remain virtual and connected to that classroom?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then you had a second question that was around how will the families be trained? And so, Peter Vallejo, who is our teacher on special assignment for instructional technology, he has created an hour-long module to do with families, and that will kick in beginning sometime in July. We are working on dates right now, and then that will continue into the school year, especially at the beginning of the school year, because we want to just start off on the right foot with our parents having some skill set that they've asked for us to help develop.
Jill?
I want to echo Lavender's things. This is so many unknowns, and so many people have worked so hard to get us where we are, and we appreciate that. But one of the things that happens in education is a lot of acronyms. And so you helped us with the glossary at the beginning, because it's really difficult. But I'm wondering if we could have just a very short description of Google Suite and LMS, so that we can understand when you're talking about those formats that you're going to use, that we know what they mean.
The Google Suite is a really broad term that refers to all of the Google online products, specifically for the purposes of what students most often interface with. We're talking about Google Classroom, which is its own LMS or learning management system, though not as robust as a lot of other learning management systems. That's a place in Google Classroom where students can upload work, teachers can provide assignments. It's a space to put in playlists, which are those lesson plans that are developed asynchronously. There's also the other Google products, Google Docs, where students may be creating material, Gmail, which students can use, obviously, for email and interaction, slides for presentations, like the one we're presenting now is on via Google Slides, Google Sheets, and any of the other Google online products. The second part of your question was what a learning management system is. A learning management system is an online platform that's used, like what I said, for Google Classroom. It's a space in which information is exchanged between teachers and students, where teachers can load lessons, supplementary materials, video playlists. They can also use those spaces to integrate other tools. So some of the more robust learning management systems have lots of features that have plugins and allow them to attach other software. And I think we'll probably be talking more later in the year about learning management systems as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Monica? And then I have another question.
My question may be premature, since you don't know what your model is yet, but have we gotten down in terms of what does a classroom look like? And, you know, I had mentioned before to Parveen, can we take videotape a classroom once we have one set up and posted online so parents can see? Because parents like me, I would be peeking in the classroom if I still had a student at the high school or in the elementary school. And this is real nitpicky, and you may not have gotten to this detail, the second question I have. Have we gotten down to the detail of things like, how do we sanitize the bathrooms and stuff after each use and that kind of thing yet?
So, I'm going to jump in here. So, your first question is actually coming up next, because right now we're talking about just the first part, the virtual part, and there won't be children in the classroom except for the ones that we were talking about, and they're not necessarily in the classroom with the teacher. So that comes next, after the next, the hybrid model. And I think it's a great idea to show people what a classroom looks like, so we're going to do that and share with folks, because I think it is, you know, you want, we will do that. So we're working on that. As far as safety, those are things we are still working on. And as I said, there is a lot to figure out with safety. We have been working on it, and we definitely are following all the strict guidelines by the health department, and we'll share that later. In fact, we have a separate presentation on just those pieces in transportation and child nutrition and things like that.
I did want to clarify, you've mentioned that there'll be special supports for intervention for specific students, and to clarify, you know, that's our lower socioeconomic class students who have, you know, special, need additional support for various reasons. Could we kind of go over that for the community to understand a little bit more what that means, intervention?
Sure. So, we know, for example, in the fourth quarter of last year, we weren't able to provide the professional development and structures beforehand that we typically would. We also know we serve groups of students that are typically underserved and need additional support to be successful. For example, last year and the year before, we presented on the needs of our McKinney-Vento and our homeless families. So that's an example of one of the groups of students we'd be looking at. The exact metrics and the groups and how we would determine who would be served is still in development, but we do know we have limited capacity. However, we want to make sure that we're serving the students with the greatest need from the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ryman. Appreciate that. Dot?
So, I'm still a little bit stuck on the 100% virtual elementary part. Can you talk about the CVVPE? What that is and just describe it a little bit?
So, I can. It's jumping a little bit ahead in the presentation, because it's in Phase Two. So I'm, if I could, would you mind just holding that question? Okay, okay, and then when we get to that, I'll go into detail.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board for Phase One? Gary?
Well, you know, the thing that gets me about all of this is how, what an impossible task it actually is to figure this out. There are no good solutions. We're just looking at the best of a bunch of bad solutions, really. And the one that was really, really keeps coming back to me is, especially with the virtual elementary part, is the pressure that this puts on parents at home, or whoever's going to be with the child. It's not like a high school kid who can pretty much navigate on his or her own, but I don't know how we solve that. I'm not, I don't know that we can. I'd just like to say that we recognize that this is a huge problem. And I wish we weren't in this situation, but thank you all for all the work that you've done to put this together so far. I appreciate that.
Before we move on, I'm actually really, thank you, Gary, for... Before we move on, I'm actually really, thank you, Gary, for, Trusty Howard, for bringing that up. Because I think if you look at the survey as well that we have taken from parents, you will see that the vast majority of our parents are asking to get our children back in school in person as soon as possible. And that is why the Senate bill does exactly what it does. Because we know how difficult it is for families and for kids. The learning gap that has been created due to students not being in school in person is tremendous. Again, that's exactly the same reason even the health departments are looking at that. So yes, we acknowledge that, and that's why I'm very happy to say that we do have a phase in when we, at least even if it's not full-time and if it's not all of the students at the same time because of social distancing, that we will bring them back in as soon as we possibly can safely. Thank you.
If back over you, Dr. Reiman. Oh, and you're on mute, I believe.
Great, so we're at the next slide now.
So then we get into Phase Two. So we just finished talking about Phase One. Now we're moving into Phase Two. We're transitioning into our blended learning models. And again, with the question of what does it look like? Next slide. And before we jump right into what the schedule actually looked like, we want to talk about why we chose the AMPM model. We get that question. And so we thought we would provide some of the rationale behind it. Really, one of the things that the elementary team looked at, we looked at all models. We looked at every model that seemed to be out there at the time and available through all the different research. And what we found was our teachers are really, and our students and our families, were interested in what's the maximum amount of time that we can get with our students. And we found that the AMPM model offered that. It provides the most frequent in-person instruction time with our students across a week's time. It also offers a consistent schedule for our families, so that families can plan for four days consistently in a row. And it supports our students to be successful, even though it's a more limited timeframe on campus, but it still allows for in-person and for us to be safe on campus. We follow the CDC guidelines. We're not using the cafeterias as a common space for eating or anything like that. We are really worked with our maintenance department and our food services to provide bagged and boxed meals that are used in classrooms and/or then taken home. It also allows for a very robust cleaning session to happen with our custodial staff in between the two sets of students coming in. We planned quite diligently with Gary and his staff to make sure that the time that we put in between those two sets of the AM students coming and leaving and the PM students coming, that we have plenty of time to make sure that every classroom, because I know that's one of the questions, the questions that have been coming up, that every classroom gets cleaned. And then last, we paid really close attention to the physical distancing practices. And we think that with half of the students coming in the AM and half of the students coming in the PM for each of our classrooms, that we will be able to hold strong with the physical distancing practices that are safe. Next slide. So what does the Phase Two Elementary and the AMPM blended learning look like? You're going to hear some of the similar kind of things that I talked about in the 100% virtual learning version. We have from Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 to 11:00, a three-hour block, or from 12:30 to 3:30, another three-hour block. Students will come in, they'll work with their teacher, there'll be a social emotional check-in, some type of enrichment activity and directions for the day. Again, we have then a two-hour window where teachers are doing the things that they do, which is with reading, language arts, and mathematics, whether they're working in small group rotations or with whole group English, language, smarts, there's a two-hour block there. Our PE teachers are helping our general ed teachers so that they're doing some activities, 10-minute window activities to let students have, you know, a little recess time, instructured, safe activities. And we're working on that right now about what it looks like. And then, of course, designated ELD time. And then that's either the morning time for half of our students, or the afternoon time. And so whenever our students are not on campus, then they're back into their asynchronous learning activities, and the specialists kick in, our PE teachers, our science teachers, our music teachers, and also our students will be completing some of the assignments from their teachers, the general ed teachers for ELA and mathematics. That's Monday through Thursday. On Friday, it's a little bit different. What we, there will still be a live daily check-in with our students, that first thing in the morning, where teachers are checking in the students. There's a designated ELD time. There's office hours with our parents to ask any questions. And then there's intervention time with our students. But that is happening virtually. And what we thought was, so we have cleaning in between on Monday through Thursday, and then we do a deeper, level cleaning for all day on Friday, where it's a virtual day, and students are at home and teachers are at home, and that's able to happen. So we believe that this is the best model for us to return to school when it's safe. And so that's the AM and PM in a nutshell. Next slide. And so here is the alternative learning option, the slide that we were talking about a little bit earlier. So for a full year of Castro Valley Virtual Pathway for elementary. And again, I will say that this is new for us. We have not had an elementary pathway. But who's this option for? It's for students who have or live with someone who has health conditions, for students who have a caretaker that has health conditions, or to families that just say, you know what, I just want 100% remote learning for my child all year long. That's what I feel most comfortable with. That's what I want. So that's what this option is for. The curriculum to be taught is a mix of our adopted curriculum combined with either Edgenuity or Acelis. Those are platforms that have been tried and true with other school districts. Edgenuity is what our CVVA uses as their curriculum, and they have an elementary version for that. So we're leaning towards Edgenuity right now, but we haven't made that final decision. As far as next steps, and maybe this answers some of the board members' questions, the elementary, we will be putting out an application for our families to apply. We're saying that to do that by July 20th. So we have a good accounting of how many families, how many students we're actually talking about. We really need that data. We're going to survey all of our teachers to determine who will be teaching in this option. There'll be an established criteria. There'll be a posting and a hiring process for teachers, because these teachers are teaching in the virtual pathway all year long. So that is going to be their job to work with our students whose families choose this particular option. And then we also have a lot of work to do in regards to, once we know how many families, how many students that their families want them to, what teachers in that interview process, then we need to recalculate. It really is a master scheduling kind of thing. So the teachers that are going to be teaching in our virtual pathway for elementary, they will not be teaching in, you know, the rest of where the AM/PM is happening. So that's two separate roles. So I want to make sure that I'm clear, because I'm not sure I was 100% clear before. So hopefully that answers some of the questions. But as we go through the rest of the presentation, I'm happy to answer other ones when we get to it. I'm going to hand off to my colleague, Vivian Paratur, again, to talk about the secondary Phase Two.
Thank you. So in the secondary Phase Two, in the AB model, students will be split into two groups. So Group A would go to school physically on Monday and Tuesday and learn asynchronously Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Group B would learn asynchronously at home on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and go to school on Thursday and Friday, with Wednesday being the deep cleaning day. Could I have the next slide, please? This is a visual representation of the AB model. This is just a sample. You'll notice there aren't any times, because the middle school may have different needs from the high school. For example, the middle school has asked to do Monday and Tuesday, Monday, first, second, and third period, and Tuesday, fourth, fifth, and sixth period, then go to B for second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, because they have a block system that they pair students together. And so for them, their first, third, fifth doesn't work as well. Each school will have their own timings and their own period length, but they will be approximately the same length. They just may start at different times in the morning. The AB model was the top model pick on the parent's survey. If I could have the next slide, please? The second option that we're asking the board to choose between AB and the 10-4 model, the second option is the 10-4 model. Students are still divided into two groups, Group A and Group B. Group A will go to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in Week One and learn asynchronously Friday through the following Friday in Week Two. And Group B will learn asynchronously Monday through Friday in Week One, and then go to school Monday through Thursday, Week Two, and then Friday again asynchronously. This allows for 10 days away from school between groups. This is the least preferred model by parents, but does allow for the most time between the cohorts. Could I have the next slide, please? So this slide is the representation of Phase Two for secondary for the 10-4 model. This shows you very clearly the modified block, first, third, fifth on Monday, second, fourth, sixth on Tuesday, first, third, fifth on Monday again, second, fourth, sixth on Tuesday. Again, with middle school, this will be first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth on the next day. So this shows you how the students are learning four days in a row, and then they have the 10 days off, and then they come back again to Week One. Could I have the next slide, please? So here are the similarities and the differences between the 10-4 and the AB model. They both have morning classes in person. They both have physical and virtual instruction. And they both have a free and reduced grab-and-go lunch. On the off weeks, so for Week Two for Group A, they may come through school and go and get a drive-through lunch for our free and reduced lunch students. The differences are that the AB schedule, all the students come to school each week. And in the 10-4 model, half the students come to school each week. The afternoons for both AB and 10-4 are the same in that there will be the activities that they have, student activities, they will have advisory period, they will have interventions, they will have their counseling, their special ed services. All of those will be done asynchronously in the afternoon with the specialists. Could I have the next slide, please? The alternative option for secondary, including middle school, will be CVVA, Castro Valley Virtual Academy, which is accredited already, and it now will be open to middle school, which it wasn't previously. Families would have to apply to this and go through the intake process, as they have been doing. This program has been up and running in Castro Valley. So the classes can be taught. Once a week, they go to school and then meet with a teacher, and the rest of the time it's asynchronous learning or online learning with their teacher. Students can be duly enrolled. So if there is a class that CVVA does not offer, a student can take one class or two classes at Castro Valley High School and the rest of their program at CVVA. Could I please have the next slide? So this slide briefly outlines the safety equipment that will be in place before the first day of school. There is going to be a really large board presentation on safety on the 15th, where there will be a lot more details than this. We are following guidelines from the CDC and the County Health Department. And the items that you see in our safety toolbox are already at the district or being installed right now through the summer at different sites. Could I have the next slide, please? Maintenance has worked with custodians to train them in disinfecting. And each school will develop a plan specific to their physical plant to account for all of these steps. So every site is slightly different, and each principal will meet with their safety team and come up with their own specific plan. Could I have the next slide, please? Once the plan has been presented to the board and an option for secondary has been chosen, we will communicate with the staff and families. So schools will develop an action plan for reopening and will communicate that. And we will continue to plan the August PD days, which are very important days. And so there are lots of next steps to go forwards with, which includes a lot of communication with our families and our teachers. Could I have the next slide? Thank you. So now we're opening up for questions from the board.
Stop, and then I'll go.
So it sounds like the virtual option for elementary students, parents have to decide before the school year. So is there a possibility of switching? Say, you know, we're starting the school year virtually, and, you know, classes are assigned, but then we move into Phase Two and a family is not comfortable with moving into Phase Two. Do they have the option to then switch to virtual? And then that seems to me like then they are no longer connected with that classroom they were originally assigned to. They're going to be connected with a different classroom that's all virtual. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so we definitely want to be as flexible as we can be. That said, the question is what we can guarantee. So because of, depending on how staff are allocated, we are hopeful that we would be able to accommodate requests if there's a severe need or a reason, but we cannot guarantee it. So that's why we're presenting it as a 100% virtual full-year program, because we can't guarantee that we wouldn't have moved staff to one location or another. That said, we are making every effort to be as flexible as possible.
So let me add just a little bit to that, because I've seen a lot of questions around that as well. So basically, once, we need to know who has those conditions that we described, compromised immune system or family members and things like that. And once they tell us, no, I really do need to stay full-time virtual, we need to know that in advance so that we can work and find which teachers are going to be doing that. Because the teachers who are going to do the full-year virtual aren't going to be also doing the other piece. So we are going to have some teachers actually move into that sort of, if you call it, that kind of school. But to your point, which is a really great question, because I've heard it from other people, let's say the student is in that program, and after the first trimester, they're like, this is really not working, and things have shifted, and I need to come back. We will make accommodations for them, and we will, like as Dr. Jason Reiman said, we will try to get them back with the teacher in there. But it's just, we're hoping that it won't be a whole lot of people that we can accommodate.
I have a follow-up on that. So it sounds like there's a criteria to qualify for the virtual. It can't, just a parent feeling anxiety about this terrible deadly pandemic is not enough?
I'm glad you asked that question in terms of the secondary programs. That's the current structure for the secondary program. That said, we're in the process of revising that for this context. Additionally, you know, we're looking at, as we get more students, we're anticipating lots more students potentially taking advantage of CVVA. What advantage could that bring in terms of course offerings and potentially offering more courses than we have in the past? That said, that's part of the reason that we, it's so important that we move now, as Mr. Madi was sharing before, the more information we have earlier, the earlier we can make that information available for parents so that we can share with them, hey, this is the plan that we came up with, here are the options that are available to you.
Yeah.
And if I could offer just like an elementary example, so if I am a C So if I am a CVE family or a Marshall family or whichever elementary school, and my family opts for the 100% remote learning CVVPE program from the very beginning of the year, then I will not be in a classroom at CVE. Like, I will not be in with classmates at CVE anymore. I will be with my classmates that have also opt for 100% remote learning. Those will be my classmates, and we will have a teacher. So hopefully that helps, because I know there's a lot of questions around this, because it's new for everybody, it's new for us, it's new for our community, it's new for our teachers. And so we're going to try to get it right, but we're going to need, you know, there's more time to work out specific details. But I wanted to give that example at the elementary level, because it is so new.
Yeah, that really does help. I feel like there's a lot of community connections that form. So if you're sort of floating around from virtual space to virtual space, you don't get that.
Right.
So I see Joe and Gary, but I have one question. I know this is very specific, and I know that when we talk about health and safety, that we're going to go into the details later. There isn't a mention of cleaning between the A and B, but I just want to verify, there will be a cleaning after the B to prepare for the A the next day.
Yes.
Let me clarify that, just to make sure it wasn't explicitly stated. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
And to add to what you're saying, Lavender, part of the program is there's a deep cleaning between both of them, but there's also between A and A. So every day, custodians will be going through and cleaning the surfaces, et cetera. On the Wednesday and on the Friday, there would be a deeper cleaning between the cohorts also.
And then my second question for now is, I know that we will get into the details later, but we will be doing health screenings and hoarding off specific areas. We'll be working that out later, but I just want to recognize that there will be some form of health screening so that we can protect everybody. So I just want to state, you don't go into detail, you don't have to, because we don't know yet, but just want to, yes, no, yes, you know.
Yeah, so let me jump in there. So yes, we're going to find all that information and share with you. But I think this, you know, people might have heard that every student's temperature will be taken. We are not hearing that that's what schools are going to be required to do or should do, but there will be a lot of requirements and requests of parents, and a lot of requirements for us to check at school and for adults. So we'll give you that information later. I did want to say, one of the questions that kept coming up when I read comments was if I choose the virtual option, the all-virtual option that we were just talking about, do I lose my space at my school after this is all over? And the answer is no. If you're hearing that from other school districts, it's because they constantly overload students, and we don't do that. We don't need to do that. So I want people to know that if you go into the all-virtual, you're not going to lose your space at your school.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, Harveen just answered my question, my clarification, but I just wanted to also throw out to the folks that are watching that a lot of the requests that we're getting about keeping siblings together or peer groups and those kinds of things, all those things have not yet been determined, and we'll do the very best that we can. But I think for those of you that are looking at the 100% virtual, and you know your child, of course, when this is, the vaccine arrives and we go back to school, your child can go back to their home school with the friends and relationships that they've already built. It is really important for you to know. So, thanks.
And you, Joe, Gary?
I was just wondering why there was not an A B option for the elementary school in Phase 2? Could you go over that?
So we did, the elementary team did look at, as I think I said a little bit earlier, that we looked at pretty much every model that was out there available from the research, inclusive of the A B model. But when we looked at the A B model and we looked at the A M model, I mean, A M P M model, we found that the A M P M model was a better model for elementary students. We felt like, again, back to that kind of rationale page, that it gave us more time with our students for direct instruction, which we thought was critically important. It gave us the ability to give a really consistent schedule so that we thought families, yes, it's still challenging, but at least you have four days of consistent students are going to be in school. And it also allowed us to follow the CDC and the Alameda County Health Department's regulations around not using cafeterias, staying for a longer period of time with little ones throughout the day and trying to serve them lunch. And so it was just, we went through and we just did a whole bunch of pros and cons and found way too many cons with the A B model and so many more positives with the A M P M model. So we did consider it. Actually, we went through it very thoroughly and asked the same set of questions for every model, and A M P M came out on top.
And just to add to what Ms. Rashidi is saying, there are also different needs at different age groups. And in terms of the amount of time that's spent without contact with a teacher, it's greater at the secondary level, because students are more mature and could potentially handle that. However, the A B model might, A M P M model might not work at the secondary level, because then you're taking three to six classes in a shorter period of time. Conversely, the A M P M model works really well for the elementary students for the reasons that Ms. Rashidi shared.
Monica?
I was just curious. One of the issues that came up with a lot of schools, although I think we handled it pretty well when we shut down in March, was getting kids access to computers and MiFi's, the Wi-Fi systems. When will those be distributed? Will that be done, I guess, for the lower grades? I mean, some of the older levels, the upper levels, the students may already have Chromebooks, but when will the Kinders and the TKs get theirs?
So that, if you remember, a few weeks back, we did a presentation about one-to-one computing that Mr. Ko shared with us. So we are getting all of those computers ready and prepared. So everybody will be able to have that. We did give out MiFi's, and we will continue to do that. But one of the reasons that you heard Dr. Ryman and everybody talk about bringing some of our students in is because even when we gave some of our students MiFi, that wasn't enough. We need, some of our students need a space actually to do that work, to make sure their internet is working perfectly. So those kinds of things, we will work around and make sure that from day one, whether it be at home or somewhere, we're on our campus. Again, not in the classroom necessarily, but we will have with adults and with all of us kind of jumping in and doing whatever it takes, that they have the internet, they have the computers, but they also have the space. So yes, everybody will make sure. In fact, I think we're going to be in much better shape because of the refresh that we did with all of the computers.
And Gary?
So I hear what you're saying about the need for regular days in a row with the A M P M model, but I still have real concerns about safety, how we ensure that there's adequate ventilation in a classroom so that the PM students aren't getting a higher viral load, if there is a viral load, than the AM students are. How do we make sure that there's enough airflow happening and the cleaning part? And I know this needs to be worked out, and there will be the presentation on the 15th, but I feel hesitant to approve a plan where I don't have those kinds of details that really concern me. And also, I feel like the A M P M model is, it wasn't the ones that parents chose. And I think it's a burden on parents to, you know, go to work for a couple of hours in the morning and then have to drive back and get their student and take them to class for their couple of hours of class, and then come back after to pick them up. So it feels to me like it's more complicated for parents, even though they can plan that every day, but that's every day, versus having, you know that your student will be on campus for this many hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then you've got that block of time to work, if parents need to go to work.
So right now, we're just responding to clarifying questions, and then your comments will address after all the questions are asked, and there's a motion in a second, and then we'll discuss. What you actually brought up is something that I've, you know, that I've heard before as well. So great points, but we'll get back to it. And I'm sure at that point, Ms. Suzie Chan will jump in and say a few words about that, too. So if there are any other clarifying questions?
Gary has one. I thought, I saw your hand, Gary.
I'm not sure that it qualifies as a clarifying question. I'm not quite sure what that means, but at any rate, I do have a question, and it's, are our after-school partners working, and are they available at this point? And what is our relationship with them in terms of making sure that everything is safe and cleaned up and everything? Because that could mitigate some of the problems that parents might have. Thank you.
Ms. Chan can respond to that question.
Yes. So we've been working with our childcare providers. And so what we've done is actually, we've met with them a few times, and so they are supportive of the district. And so what we are going to offer is actually, instead of just one room that they're currently in right now, we are giving them additional rooms to expand their program. They're very limited in the number of kids that they can serve in a classroom. I believe it's about 12. And so we're offering additional rooms to expand their program. And so all three of our providers that are at the sites, they are going to work with us on doing that.
I also had a question about food in the classroom and eating. That seems really risky. You know, you can't eat with a mask on. Is there a process that we don't have food in the classroom? I don't know if that's a clarifying question or just a process.
Yeah.
But this one, before I forget it, I wanted to say it.
Yeah, it's a good question. And we're going to have some more information on the food piece and child nutrition. Next time, we're still finishing out that process. But yeah, that's really important. I mean, there's so much training we need to do also with our students, you know, about how they touch and eat and all of that stuff. So we'll get you more information on that later. Unless, Suzie, is there an answer that you have for the food right now? No, okay.
Monica?
I noticed there was something about limiting parent volunteers, and I totally understand that. But as someone who volunteered a lot when my kids were in elementary school, I'm wondering, and knowing how teachers rely on the volunteers to do a lot of the Xeroxing and interacting with students who may need a little more support and all that, have we gotten that far as to how we're going to deal with parent volunteers in the classroom?
We've been talking about that, and we're working on it, but it will be very, very limited. Yes, that's something we want all the time, but this is a pandemic and very unique circumstances. So it won't be as we've had it. In fact, one of the guidance, a part of the guidance that we are getting from the Health Department is actually around that, not allowing visitors and really changing all of those systems.
Gary?
I notice in the secondary A B model, the afternoons seem to be, there won't be anybody on campus, is that right? I mean, or could we extend the time that each group is on campus rather than sending them home?
There will be some people on campus. So we'll be having the clubs, the activities, also some interventions with some students who need to stay on campus to be able to get help with their work, or even just a place to do their work. So there will be, and there will be counseling going on, there may be groups, there may be some special ed services. Many of them can be performed, you know, virtually, asynchronously at home, or synchronously rather, but virtually at home. But some of them cannot. They need to actually be physically present on campus. Dr. Ryman's going to add.
And just to add to what Ms. Ertor is saying, to Ms. Theodore's question earlier, also, one of the considerations is food services and keeping all of the students on campus during lunch rather than being able to release some of the students at that time is an additional safety benefit for us.
You know, as we're making sure that groups are not cross-pollinating, and that's part of the, you know, the different models. As we're talking, I mean, Vivian, I'm sorry, you mentioned clubs. Like, how do we prevent cross-pollination from the different groups with clubs? I mean, I know that's probably too much in detail for today, and I'm sure we'll work it out, but I just want to, that's something to think about.
We haven't gone into detail about clubs, but one of the considerations is the clubs that can meet virtually, then meeting virtually with the club advisor in the afternoons. So that way, the A and the B group can meet together online, since, you know, it'll be a virtual meeting. Some clubs, we may have to be creative about a little bit.
Thank you. So normally around this time, what we usually do when we're in person is we take a short break. Given that we have a lot of people on the line, 862 community members, welcome. We appreciate you coming here today. We would like to take, we say five minutes or 10 minutes, what works?
Five minutes is good.
Take a five-minute bio break, just to grab some water, maybe some sustenance, maybe use the facility. We are going to hold for five minutes. We'll start at 8:35, just to give everybody some time to get back. Thank you so much. We'll be right back.
Yes, Jill?
For our attendees who are listening in from the public and from our parent groups and our teachers, we appreciate you allowing us to take a short break. Hopefully, you got one as well. And we're going to be starting back up. Superintendent Amadi, are we at the point where public comment can occur? Oh, you're on mute. I can't hear you.
Yes, yes, it is. And we have about 50, 45 people. So if you would like to explain.
Something else really quickly? Okay, so, given that we normally have 30 minutes, I would like to suggest that we move it up to approximately an hour and give people about a minute and a half. I wanted to see if the board was okay with that so that we could extend the time and allow for more people to speak. Can I see thumbs up from the board? Get consensus? Gary? Okay, great. So what we're going to do is we have your hands raised. I'm going to call you, and you will have a minute and a half on the clock. And just so you know, as you raised your hands, the system put you in line of the order of when you raised your hand. So we're calling you in the order that the hand raised was received. So it will be a little bit of time, but we really hope you all will give us the time to hear all of our community members that would wish to speak tonight. So I'm going to hand it to Dolly Adams. Dolly, are you with us?
Hi. Oh, hi.
We can hear you. Your time will start as soon as you start talking.
Oh, okay. To tell you the truth, I didn't actually raise my hand. I'm in the grocery store now. But I've been listening, of course, to the whole board meeting. And I probably have some of the same concerns that some of the other people have here. Really, of course, as a teacher myself, I like to see kids in the classroom as much as possible. But on the other hand, being 61 myself, I worry about, you know, being exposed to a lot of germs and end up getting COVID-19. I would say that, since I mostly have taught secondary, only a little bit of elementary school, I would think, at least for the kinds of students I have, seeing the students for shorter periods of time more frequently would probably keep them more engaged. So I believe that would be that A-M-P-M model. Okay? And thank you very much, all of the people who worked on this. I think it shows that you really have been thinking about it. I wish we knew exactly what the plan would be. But, of course, we can't know that because we can't predict the future. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dolly Adams. Now, again, I am allowing people to speak based on the order that I see them. So next, I will call on Sierra Randall, and I'm going to open up for you to speak.
Good evening. I'm Sierra Randall, and I teach at a special ed class for students with mild to moderate disabilities at Stanton Elementary School. With the record-breaking numbers of new COVID cases, it frightens me to think of returning to the classroom. As a teacher who experiences students with great needs, I'm gravely concerned about the student's safety, staff member's safety, my safety, and the trickle-down effect. My family cares for my 94-year-old grandfather. It would be a life-or-death situation if he were exposed to this deadly virus. There are many other situations where employees or students would then expose high-risk individuals. Is death a risk we are willing to take as a school district? During my three years as a special ed teacher, I've been hit, kicked, spit on, bit, and sent to the hospital twice. Many of these behaviors occur on a daily basis, and other students and staff have been injured as well. We do our best to work with these challenging behaviors, but district personnel have assured me this is part of the job that comes with being in special ed. This close contact that occurs from these behaviors is a breeding ground for spreading the virus. What will happen when these endangering behaviors occur? Who will risk being exposed to help support that student? Masks and social distancing have been proven to help slow the spread of COVID-19. How can we expect our young students to wear masks properly for multiple hours at a time and maintain a safe distance when we have seen adult members of society struggle to do so? What will happen when a student takes their mask off? I could continue to go on about concerns I have about the school district choosing to open up so early, especially as our neighboring districts have chosen a more conservative approach, which includes distance learning for the first trimester and then to revisit a blended program if the data shows it's safe.
Sierra, we're at time, so I'm gonna have you wrap up.
I'll leave you just with some final questions I'd like you to consider. Will teachers be expected to use their sick time when they're exposed to COVID at the workplace? What is the plan for when a student's family member has COVID or when another teacher or staff member does? We need some more plans. Please reexamine the opening of our schools, and I hope that we keep the community in mind when we consider opening our doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. Our next speaker is Sarah Raymond. Sarah, we put some time on the clock, and we're going to allow you, open you up for a minute and a half.
Okay, thank you very much. I will just say, many of the questions that I put on my list of questions over the last few days, thankfully, have already been answered. But the biggest ones I have really concern what criteria are going to be followed in making the decision as to what date the Phase 2 will be implemented. And with respect to those criteria, are they going to be specific? Are they going to be measurable, attainable, realistic? Are these criteria going to be shared with us before we need to elect a choice to either go with the hybrid model or with the 100% distance learning? I think that this is really critical information to share with us before we make these decisions. Otherwise, we might be running into the same kind of problem that Dot brought up in her question about what happens when it's time to phase into Phase 2, and some parents start thinking, you know, I'm not so comfortable with this. And it would be nice to know what the district is going to be looking at. When campuses are reopened, is there going to be testing given to staff and to students? What happens if someone tests positive, whether the district provides the test or not? Another question that's come to my mind is, is lunch optional? For instance, could I pick up my kids before lunch starts and bring them home so that they don't have to navigate a lunch period? Schools such as Vanoy has only one custodian. Are they going to have more custodial time in order to ensure that this deep cleaning can take place between the AM and the PM cohorts? Thanks very much. That's all.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, Sarah, I'm gonna mute your phone, and I'm gonna go next down to line to Amy Ramos. Amy, I'm gonna allow you to speak. And you have, once you're here with us, Amy?
I'm here, Lavender.
We'll start your time now.
All right, thank you. So I just actually want to say, I wish every board meeting or PTA meeting had this type of attendance, concern of participation all the time. We're in very fluid times, and I know things are out of control of our leadership. And I want to thank the district, the board, the teacher teams, and all the parent leaders for all the time and care that they put into the plan. I especially thank Parveen and Dr. Raymond and Nia for the time, the, just, oh, the amounts of time that have been put in. This is amazing to each of us here and now. I think we need to look at it like we're all one big team. I think we all want our kids back to some normalcy, and we all want to see that they get there as soon as possible. In all my years in the schools, it was just 40-plus. I've never seen such a present and compassionate superintendent. And so I thank you, Parveen. I really just wanted to make the comment. It's not a complaint. I totally understand that we all want nothing more than the safety of all our staff, students, and teachers, and to get back to some sort of a normal form of school. So there's a lot of unanswered questions. I get it, and I think everybody feels the pressure. But how can you answer these types of things in this type of uncertainty? So I appreciate all of you for doing the best that you can with the cards that are being dealt, the constraints that are out there, and all the needs of each individual student. So thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Amy, I'm going to mute your line. And next is Connie. Connie, I'm gonna open up your line. I don't have a last name, so just so you see, I'm gonna allow you to speak, Connie, and there's a minute and a half. So as soon as you unmute yourself, we will start the clock. Connie, are you there? All right, Connie, I'm going to move you back. If you would still like to speak, and you come back on the line, let us know. Okay. I have next Sarah Fetter. So Sarah Fetter, I'm going to open up the line to you. Sarah, hello?
Hello. Thank you. So I understand that there are a lot of details still being worked out, as we've kind of all noticed. But July 20th is less than two weeks away. And that's my biggest concern, that there are really so many details missing that I would need and probably most people would need before I can make an informed decision about what's best for my children and my family. I honestly have so many more questions than I could possibly ask in one minute, but I'll stick to two around logistics. From the proposed schedule of Phase 1, it looks like all of my kids will be online at the same time, and just logistically around devices, internet, and all of that. Not sure how that's gonna work, and I'm visualizing me running between a kindergartner, first grader, and second grader, who are all frustrated with some technical issue. And then the second really is about social emotional learning. If I do have to choose the distance learning option for my children due to my own health issues, is there going to be some sort of option for children in the distance learning cohort that could perhaps match them up with other families and create small bubbles so they do still have some in-person interaction with other children? And that perhaps if the district could kind of support that or help navigate that for families in terms of matching people that are interested up and maybe setting some ground rules and structure around it? I know that would help me feel more comfortable with choosing distance learning if I need to, to make sure that my children, you know, still get what they need in terms of typical peers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, I'm gonna mute your phone and move you off. And next, we have Laura Sepulveda. I'm going to allow you to talk, Laura. Laura, if you were there, it is your turn. There you are, Laura.
Hi. Hi, my name is Laura Sepulveda. I'm a parent and a teacher, CVTA union rep, CVTA board member. I have a couple of things. First, thank you for all the hard work everyone involved. My name is listed as one of the people on the secondary team, but I only participated in two minutes, I'm sorry, two meetings, and not really in the decision-making process. So just want to be clear there. I want to speak to Superintendent Amadi's thing where she said, or statement when she said most families want their students to return to school. As a parent, that's true, but it keeps being overlooked that the second half of that statement was when it's safe. That hasn't been mentioned once. It just, kids, families want their kids to return to school. We do, but when it's safe. And we all have different ideas of when that is. To Gary Howard's point earlier with childcare, I'm a parent, too. And if the district requires me to come to school to do my distance learning teaching, I have to leave my kid home alone. That doesn't feel good. Please allow us teachers to be flexible. Last thing I want to say is in all of the secondary models, there is no provision for cleaning classrooms between classes. So all kids who show up in my class on any given day will come into the same classroom without cleaning. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Laura, I'm gonna move you off. And I will move to Julian Cardona. Julian, I'm opening up the floor to you. We will start, there you are, Julian. Clock's starting.
Great, thank you. I am concerned that parents will not have sufficient time to decide on a learning option for their children with the July 20th deadline without knowing all of the safety measures being put into place. It is concerning to hear that temperature checks may not be required. We need to see an example of proposed classroom setups and other safety measures being taken at the school before we can appropriately make these decisions for our families. Additionally, or excuse me, additional questions include, what is the cleaning plan for in between AM and PM sessions? How will the air be cleaned? How often will the HVAC filters be replaced? Will HVAC be running daily? What method of instruction will students receive if their teacher contracts the virus? Will they have substitutes, or will they move to a virtual platform for a 14-day period? Will classes move? If so, would it be 14 days or longer? Have teacher unions committed to every paid teacher providing real face-to-face virtual instruction should they have to move to a virtual platform? Again, there are a lot of questions that we still don't have the answers to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julian. I'm going to mute your line and take you off. And I'm going to move on to Maddie Goett. I'm opening you up to talk, Maddie. As soon as you unmute your line, there you are, Maddie. Your time starts now.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Maddie Goett. I am a third-grade teacher at Chabot Elementary. I'm on the CVTA Executive Board on the elementary reopening team, and I'm part of the team creating third-grade distance learning curriculum playlists for the district. This is my summer break, but I chose to devote this break to creating the best possible learning program for Castro Valley students during a worldwide pandemic. I understand that my job has changed during this global emergency, and I, along with my fellow teachers, are willing to be flexible to ensure our students continue learning. CVUSD teachers have been waiting patiently for guidance and direction regarding reopening schools. The current plan was sent to teachers on Monday, July 6th, but has unfortunately caused a great deal of anxiety and confusion among the teaching staff. As part of the elementary planning team, I was surprised and disappointed by parts of the plan. It is clear that although we were involved in the discussions, teacher input was not considered. involved in the discussions, teacher input was not considered when making the most impactful decisions, especially around student and teacher well-being. This week, elementary teachers reached out to the CVTA Board to voice concerns about this plan, especially around community safety, student screen time, and emotional well-being, just to name a few. If I may speak for teachers, we feel uninformed, unprepared, and undervalued. Unfortunately, the current plan has brought up more concerns than solutions. After reading the reopening plan, CVUSD teachers are stressed. Stressed teachers are not effective teachers and cannot support students through this unprecedented time. Please trust your teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. I'm going to mute you, Maddie, and take you off. I'm going to check on Connie, since she's still hanging out there. Give her another chance to talk, Connie. There you are. I'm going to start your time.
Actually, I'm down.
Sorry.
No worries. She's on the phone. Actually, I'm going to be just conveying concerns. We just want our kids to be safe at school. But as right now, we, parents, we are worried that our kids are young, and we don't want them to go to school at this point. We just want the kids to go to school using the computer, teaching online. That's the best solution for us, because my kids are worried they're caught in the virus, and because I'm only parents that are able to work. Once I stop working, and we don't able to afford a lot of stuff. So that's the only concern. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to mute your line and take you off. Lisa Calderon, I'm opening up the line to you. There you are, Lisa. The floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Calderon. I'm an elementary teacher at Vanoy. CVUSD often highlights the partnership between students, teachers, and families as essential to a healthy and thriving educational system. As teachers, for members in this educational partnership, we have to learn from and apply the experiences of last school year in order to make this upcoming year the best we can for students. This June, I participated in the Elementary Planning Committee to discuss CVUSD's reopening vision and gave my opinion on various scenarios presented by the district. These discussions took place with the understanding that we were there to give input on preliminary ideas, which would be further refined with the larger body of teachers through the bargaining process. I'm also a member of this year's CVTA bargaining team. The concepts just presented to the board are still in the process of being considered and adjusted based on further input from teachers. We have had and will have the pleasure of meeting with many teachers from different school sites to hear their accomplishments, difficulties, hopes, and concerns about last school year and the one upcoming. It is our way of drawing on our collective experience to create the best educational scenarios and have a voice through discussing and voting, as well as meaningfully contribute to the framework work which we believe will best serve our students. As we discuss the plans presented in this packet and bargain for schools to reopen with the necessary modifications, I'm hopeful that the board will recognize the intent of the input of their teachers. We are educational partners, and we work tirelessly to provide the best.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate your comments. I'm going to move Lisa off. And I'm going to bring Laura O'Brien in. I thought I did. No, I brought you too far in, but where did she go? Laura, there you are. I see your face. Please proceed.
Right. For those who don't know me, I'm Laura O'Brien. I'm a teacher at Castro Valley High School. I also have two students at Castro Valley High School. As a science and CTE teacher, it's really important for my students to have hands-on, in-person instruction when it is safe. I miss my students the last quarter of last year, and it's hard to teach virtually, but safety is more important. I share concerns other people did with the models presented tonight. This coronavirus is still new. It is an emerging global pandemic that has not gotten better since March. It's gotten worse. And I'm concerned with things that bring people together unnecessarily, like mandating that teachers during distance learning teach from their classrooms, which might seem like distancing until we all have to go to the bathroom at the same time, because the schedule has one together. When we bring the people back together for the hybrid model, rather than having a date attached, it would make a lot more sense to have some sort of data attached when cases have reached a certain level, for example. When we do come together, it needs to be carefully thought out and planned for physical distancing, PPE, cleaning and sanitizing, and that just has not been done. It's super complicated at the high school, which even when halved is 1,500 students, and we can't do it unless we've figured out how to do it safely. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm still on mute. Thank you, Laura. I'm going to mute you off. And she's moved off. Okay. I'm going to call on Todd Finley. Todd, you are open. As soon as you unmute, you will be ready to go.
Hi. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Todd.
Okay. So I'm also concerned about the safety. You know, I think it calls for robust testing, and there is not robust testing in the area right now. And I think it's a mistake to believe that, you know, especially the younger kids and many of the special ed kids are going to be safe when they're with their mask or with physical distancing. You know, my experience is that, you know, they'll be playing around with it a little bit, and it won't be safe in the classroom. You know, I think people have tried to make sure they're safe in other classrooms. In Arizona, on June 26th, a teacher passed away. The superintendent reports that they followed all the guidelines, but three teachers came down with the virus, and they, then one of them passed away. I think we should not succumb to the pressure that comes from above to have the classes meet in person. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to mute Todd. What I'll do is, just so everybody sees, I'm going to call on the next person, but let the next two people in waiting know so they can get prepared. So I'm going to call on David Muller and Roosevelt Chang, but afterwards we'll have Sheila Warbase and Karen Cormier. So David and Roosevelt, I don't know which one will be speaking. Please proceed.
Hi, I'm Roosevelt Chang. My husband and I are here. We have a rising fourth and fifth grader at Chabot Elementary, and our third grader, rising fourth, had the privilege of Mrs. Gett, who I heard speak earlier. I can hear all the emotion in people, and I'm getting emotional myself. We desperately want our kids back in school. And so my only clarification, though, is thank you, teachers, for all of your help. But we are a family who wants our kids back in school. And I would just like to know if masks will be mandatory for everyone. We saw it in the toolbox, but we think that's critical, and it's become politicized in this country. And I hope that if students go back, please make everybody wear masks, because we do think that's important. And we do, that's a way to keep everybody, hopefully, a little bit safer. Other countries have opened up safely because they haven't politicized so many issues. And we hope that Castro Valley can do the same, because it isn't anymore a global pandemic. It's a pandemic of the Americas. It is not one in Europe or in Asia. Thank you.
Thank you, Roosevelt. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Sheila Warbase. Sheila, I'm going to open you up. As soon as you unmute, you will be ready to go. There you go, Sheila. Let's reset, Sheila. I don't think we can hear her. Sheila, are you there? I saw you come off mute and then go back on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Well, hello, and thank you for taking my call. I'm a parent with two students in Castro Valley, one entering high school this year and the other in middle school. So Dot closely presented my question, but it wasn't specifically answered. My question to the board is, do we have the option to change from 100% full-time distant learning to the hybrid model, once or hopefully a regular schedule, once a vaccine is available? Or are students locked into a virtual learning throughout the year? So I did hear the students will not lose their place, but if I'm correct, that isn't speaking to students who would want to return to their designated brick-and-mortar classroom. So this is the second time I've asked this question. Earlier, last week or two weeks ago, I said it in an email to Amy Kyer, and I didn't hear a response. I wonder if the board or maybe Dot could add to that before tonight's meeting is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. I'm going to mute your line and take you off. We have Karen Cormier next, and Michael Cuziak following. Karen, your line is open.
I thank you for taking my question. I want to thank the board and all the consideration that not only the board, but the special working groups and teachers have undertaken to get us to this point, to even start talking about bringing our children back into the classrooms. I know this is a difficult task, and that you're working through multiple options, none of which are optimal for any of us that are on the phone. I'd like to thank Dot as well, specifically, for asking the difficult questions about the AM and PM schedules that are being considered for the elementary-level schedules. I share your concerns, and I fear for what happens when there is an exposure due to all the kids being on campus every day in this AM/PM model. With the kids on campus, there's very little time in between each of these groups to be able to truly sanitize a school. We have one custodian. We have our teachers who are going to be required to do that cleaning, and it leaves our kids with a possible exposure. I also have three kids in the district, one at the elementary, one at the middle, and one at the high school level, all of which sounds like are going to be on different schedules, different days of the week, multiple weekly schedules that are changing on a constant basis. What accommodations are going to be made for those families that have kids that have to accommodate all these different schools and all these different schedules on a daily basis? How do we keep it straight as parents? I thank you for your time, and I support our teachers' positions on encouraging them to communicate on each of these options that have been put forth in front of them.
Thank you, Karen. Karen, I'm going to mute your line and take you off. Next, we'll have Michael Cuziak, followed by Antoinette Sespin Anderson. Michael, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Good evening. This is Mike Cuziak. I'm a parent of a rising sixth grader at Creekside and a fourth grader at Chabot. It's very reassuring to see you there, Mrs. Parator, this evening. I want to thank all the hard work. Clearly, our district is taking this task seriously and a very impossible task. Would just say, as a parent, I do prefer the 10-4 model when looking at secondary. I think that is a much more manageable thing to do. And to Trustee Theodore's questions, I'm concerned about having two cohorts, cohorts a day in our elementary schools, if we could at least look at upper elementaries, going into something more of the 10-4, or I think the AV model. I think the problem here is how it's being framed at times. I think attaching specific dates to reopening right now is just very premature, and we should really be anchoring this in safety and the fact that the county health officer at the end of the day will be letting us know when we'll be moving forward. So I think shifting to just talking about how can we make quality distance learning work for us, making sure that all of us are held accountable, teachers, students, parents, all of us as stakeholders are held accountable. I really am grateful for Trustee Howard's comments about childcare. We are in a childcare crisis in this country right now. I don't expect CVUSD to solve it. I don't see my teachers as being daycare providers, but I hope CVUSD can help lead a conversation, maybe with other local government districts, with the county, with Harg and others, to see how we can solve it uniquely for our... Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Michael. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Antoinette Sespin Anderson, and then Nicole Garibaldi afterwards. Antoinette?
Hi there. Thanks so much, everyone. I just wanted to, just, just two points. I think that, you know, what sets our district apart from others is parent participation. And I know that, you know, there are, you know, greater decisions that we have to make at this point in terms of what models and what we're going to decide for our students. But I also really feel that as a community, we're very blessed to be in a position to have so many parents who volunteer, not only on the PTA levels that provide other opportunities for students and other things outside of the classroom, but in the classroom as well. And I know that, you know, we're not at that point, but I just hope that we consider whether it's, you know, putting more checklists in place and things and ensuring that we're doing it safely, ensuring that there's a process for that. But I really, really just wanted to point that out. And again, what makes our schools and our community and our school district so distinct? So we are very lucky, and I really hope that that conversation happens. And hopefully, if it is within this board's power to allow that to continue, I would really, really love, I would really love that. The other thing, a parent mentioned earlier about not having kind of the clarification on whether or not we're committing to 100% distance learning and then being able to switch, God willing, a vaccine comes in. Are we set to have that distance learning 100% of the time for the remainder of the school year? So if we can, if there can be some clarification soon before the 20th, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Antoinette. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Nicole Garibaldi, followed by Bill Trolle. Nicole, I've opened up your line.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hi. I am a parent of a kid, a first grader, and a going into TK. And my concern was in the fourth quarter of this last school year, was the pressure that was put on the parents to really put our A-game to teach this, to teach our kids. And this year, having two elementary school students, I'm concerned about their education and putting my A-game at home for them. I do have a gastrointestinal rare disease that has really, the stress has really put an issue on our family. And so I'm wondering what extra steps is the district going to help with parents and the multiple children some families have, especially in the elementary school age? So that's a real concern for me, and I really would appreciate, like, I just want a good education for my kids, whether they have to be at home or they are at school when it's safe. And I just want that to be voiced.
Thank you, Nicole. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Bill Trolle, followed by Yvette Santana. Bill, your line is open. Bill, are you there?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I didn't see the unmute prompt when you said.
Don't worry. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah. So I'm Bill Trolle. I have a second grader going to independent next term. Lot to go over all at once in 90 seconds, so I'm going to just write you through this. What happens if this plan doesn't pass tonight? Where are we then? As far as the online in the beginning, has anybody really considered the impact and time commitment of parents? I know others have commented on this. Some of us work, and we're having to play executive assistant managing classwork and class time with our younger kids. That's a big issue, and I hope somebody's considering that. Are we armed as parents with information to make good decisions about all these things that are coming up for us that we have to decide? And are we really going to be prepared with the tools and changes that are coming? Do we have time to prepare for that in time for school to start? With those of us with sped kids, I've got one who has SCA, one-on-one supporting classrooms as part of his IEP, and how's he going to get that in three hours of online training? And how is he going to get that in three hours of online training? How are they going to intervene? Is that really even going to be feasible? How, you know, are people thinking about these things? Another big topic that I wanted to focus on is safety. I know a lot of people are concerned about this. I am too. I, my kid is one that definitely would benefit from being in class, but we need them to be safe. Are masks and distancing going to really be enough for that? Where is the testing? How are people going to feel safer for our kids to be at school? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to mute your line. Shelley Ria, you are next, followed by Meta. Shelley Ria, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm a parent of a soon-to-be kindergartner and a second grader, and I've expressed a lot of the concerns. But I think the one thing that I want to touch on is, you know, we are two working parents, on the other hand, and it is nearly impossible to do this. I don't know how it's going to work with two kids on virtual classes at the same time. They certainly cannot be by themselves. Like, great, they're on virtual classes, but I still need to be there. I need to be with them. And what happens when my employer is no longer okay and patient with me? Because I have to be with my kid all day long. The other question I have is, what do we expect to change in a month, right? We've talked about this a lot, which is, why are we saying in a month? Why aren't we actually saying, you know, at work, we say, you have to have decrease in cases for 14 days before we'll consider moving into Phase 1 at work. So I think we actually need metrics around that. What happens when someone in the class or the teacher gets COVID? The other question I have is, what happens when a vaccine comes? Are we going to require parents, kids, and teachers to have that vaccine when it comes for them to be back in school? And finally, I'd like to know if we've actually thought about outside-the-box teaching, such as teaching outside where we're not confined to a small classroom. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shelley. I'm going to mute your line. Meta is next, followed by Goodman.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm a CV parent of elementary school kids and I work in healthcare. And it's very frustrating for me to hear a lot of the comments. I feel like people, a lot of people don't really understand the serious nature of the pandemic that we're going through, that it's not over, even though we're all psychologically upset about all of this. You know, when, when we see patients for routine exams and I'm in a room with a patient for 20 minutes, we wear two masks. We wear glasses, goggles, a face shield, scrubs, scrub caps, and we have extra special filters in these rooms just because I'm in a room with a patient for 20 minutes. These are patients who are asymptomatic, screened at the front door with a temperature and questions to screen out for COVID. But because of the ramping up of the numbers, our precautions that work are rising exponentially. So I have to agree that Phase 2 can't be based on a date, but it has to be based on community levels of COVID and some other quantifiable number. The other issue I'm concerned about is the AM/PM. As Dot mentioned, all those concerns she raised regarding putting safety first, it's not about convenience at this point. It's not convenient for any of us. None of this is convenient. But we have to think about safety. And, you know, some of the other models like the 10-4, although they might not be ideal, is a lot, you know, better from a public health standpoint. And finally, I wanted to say, when we do switch to Phase 2 hybrid, is there any teacher flexibility with in-person versus live? Can a teacher decide to continue virtually if they feel that the students are all moving forward while meeting their, you know, benchmarks? And no one is suffering from the Phase 1 learning? Can an individual classroom decide to continue with their virtual learning?
And Meta, we have to let you go because we're past your time, but we'd like your comments. Thank you. I'm going to mute your line. We're going to move to Goodman next and Annie followed. Oh, Goodman left. Annie then, Al-Anon District 17. Annie, are you there? There you go, Annie. Floor is yours.
Can you hear me? This is Ann. Hi, I'm Ann Panagatia. I have students at Independent. I just want to start off by saying that it is incredibly unfortunate that the federal government has not made this a moonshot moment. So I fully understand and appreciate that the plans that are being put forward are being put forward with very limited resources. However, please do not let us adopt something just because of, for the fear of having nothing. It's quite obvious that we'll be moving forward with distant learning. So please make sure that the distant learning platforms are equitable between those who might opt into 100% distant learning versus the hybrid model. Because the reality is, I don't believe that anyone's going to be back on campus anytime soon. So when you look, especially at the elementary and this whole hybrid, let's make sure that those who opt into hybrid in the hopes of getting back to campus have the same access to quality programming that those who from the initial gate opt into. Also, I agree with Meta's comments earlier. We really want our kids to school every day, but the reality is that a one-week-on, one-week-off split is probably better from a public health standpoint. Let us partner with Harg, with Be Best, with AT, with other, the universities who may not bring schools back to have a concept of distant learning camps for those of us who work who potentially pay for other people to supervise the distant learning. Let us be creative in this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I'm going to mute your line. We have Al-Anon District 17 and One Plus Seven Pro next. Al-Anon District 17, are you there? All right, I'm going to mute your line. And move on to One Plus Seven, followed by Jenny. One Plus Seven Pro, are you there? All right, we're going to move on to Jenny, followed by Shelley Sherman. Jenny, there you go. Line is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody who's worked on these committees. I have elementary and a middle school. And my question is looking at the middle school schedules, whether it's the 410s or the A/B model. And with all the kids rotating classes, there's not a core set of classes the way there is in elementary. How are they going to clean in-between classes? This is taking from Laura Sepolitis' question. So, and with Canyon being so large, you're just, it's just a huge bubble. How is that going to work? Second is, what are the criteria for opening the school in terms of the data? And what are the criteria, assuming we can ever open this school year? What are the criteria going to be to have to shut down again? And what is that going to look like for our kids who, who have to go back? And the emotional upheaval that's going to have on them from having social to having no social interaction? So those are my questions. And the same with the elementary, same. I'm just very curious about the safety, the cleaning, the schedules. Are there enough janitors? Are the teachers going to have to do this? How are we going to make it safe? And to the last person who's talked, how are we going to make sure the equitable hybrid option is just as effective as the online-only option? Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. I'm going to mute your line. We have Shelley Sherman next, followed by Holly Powell. Shelley, there you go, Shelley. Line is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us some time to just share our comments and, and concerns and ask questions. I also want to say thank you to everyone who put in all the time and effort coming up with these plans for the elementary schools and the secondary schools. They seem really clear and comprehensive. I'm a parent at the high school, but I'm also a teacher at the adult school. And it seems there is no plan for the adult school. So that's my concern is, is anyone coming up with a plan, working on a plan for return to the adult school? There are varying needs. The Adults with Disabilities Program, ESL, and CTE having very different needs. So I'm just want to throw that out there and make sure somebody is giving us some thought and working on a plan. And as a medical professional, I would love to be included and putting in input on what that looks like. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. I'm going to mute your line. Holly is next, followed by Karine. Holly?
Hi, I just have more of a clarification question more than a comment. I'm wondering what Phase 2 will look like for TK students, considering they only would go to school for a half-day even in a typical school year? My only question.
Thank you, Holly. Going to mute your line. Next, we have Karine, followed by Michelle LaFrenz. Karine?
Hi. So I am Zoe Lawrence, and I am starting at ninth grade at Castro Valley High this year. And I have some concerns about how PE will be instructed because students aren't getting enough exercise as it is. A few of my questions are, how will PE be instructed in Phase 1 and 2? And will all sports still be offered? And if so, how will they be organized safely? Finally, how many students will be in each classroom? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Zoe. Your line is going to be muted. Michelle LaFrenz, you're next, followed by Chris Knott. Michelle, are you there? All right, Michelle, going to move on. Looks like Bethany Chan. And followed by Mike Hernandez. Bethany, are you there? There you are, Bethany. Floor is yours.
My name is Bethany Chan and I'm a math teacher at Canyon. I'd like to thank those of you on the board who stayed on and are attentively listening during this comment section, where parents, staff members, and community members and students are worried about their health and safety. I am offended that the Google Form comment card does not have a staff or teacher option. And I'm also concerned that none of these questions from the board have shown any concern for their staff members. All parents are hearing that their students will be able to get into class, but here's what staff is hearing. There is no plan for our safety. There is no plan for testing students and staff members each day for our safety. No plan for what happens if a student or staff member contracts COVID. No guarantee for precautionary materials or cleaning materials. And even if you do say we have those, I'm not sure I believe you because I've been paying out of pocket for my student materials for the six years that I've been teaching. No plan for students to be physically distanced in a classroom and no plan for psychological support when and if a teacher, staff member, or one of their fellow students die. Your board asks questions about daycare, academic content, and even ventilation for students. Nowhere in your questions do you have concern for staff members that are risking their lives and the lives of their families for student education. I double-dog dare you to sit in a classroom with 20 rotating seventh-grade students and breathe their air. If you cannot answer these questions for the opening plan, if my concerns echo every other member that have commented before me, then these concerns that should be taken into consideration and maybe you should listen to the education experts. We should not be jumping into these models while risking the lives of our staff members. I haven't even touched the fact that hybrid models will double our workload by creating curriculum for distance learning as well as modified-in-class instruction. And for the first time ever, I am considering quitting teaching because endangering my family is not something that I am willing to compromise. Thank you.
Give your feedback and comment. Going to, oh, sorry, I pushed the wrong button, Bethany. I'm going to move to Michelle LaFrenz and then over to Mark Maladnich. Michelle, are you back and able to talk to us now? Okay.
Hello?
Oh, you're there. There you go.
If we were, if we were to go to the online teaching, how would we know that the student is, you know, comprehending and then doing the work independently and not, you know, cheating or going, you know, doing their work off of the book as opposed to doing their work independently? No?
Is that your full comment, Michelle?
Yes, hold on. One more thing. One more thing.
What the, the question was, say, if kids, we have kids in middle school and also in elementary school. If we were to do 100% online, how would you know that our kids are not getting helps during the exam, during the test, during the quiz? How would you grade our kids based on that?
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to mute your line and move to Mark next, followed by Nancy Galloway. Mark?
Hi there, everybody. My name is Mark Maladnich. I am the president of the Castro Valley Teachers Association. I am grateful for all the work our staff and management have put into the reopening process under incredible, difficult circumstances. And I'd like to thank everyone who has spoken tonight. This is a great community and it was so nice just hearing the support that the community has for a safe reopening and not, not kind of hitching it on to just dates, but actual data. There is no substitute for full-time in-person learning. We wish, like everyone here, that we could get back to normal, but we cannot. The collective anxiety that we are experiencing is from the unknown. The number of cases is growing in the Bay Area. Current research from the World Health Organization does not lend well for gathering in indoor spaces. As Mr. Finley had mentioned, three teachers in Arizona who were following protocols taught in the same classroom contacted COVID-19 and one died from the disease two weeks ago. These are the realities that we are facing as we go forward to back to in-person learning. I think the best thing we can all do is be willing to adjust and compromise and to set realistic expectations as this pandemic evolves, but to never compromise on the safety of our children and staff. Our union will continue to work with district management on a safe opening. And if that means we need to adjust even the proposed schedules that you vote on tonight, we will. Many of the educators in Castro Valley are also parents who send their children to our schools. We want what is best for our children, whether they are students or our students or our own children. And when we reopen, we want to make sure that we have every safeguard to protect our community from this horrid virus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Nancy Galloway, followed by Murray. Nancy, are you here?
Hi, everybody. I'm Nancy Galloway, and yes, I am back. The situation is new, but the struggle is exactly the same. Please let me work harder. I teach elementary PE, and my schedule when school starts calls for my teaching time to be limited to two 20-minute Zoom meetings per week. Okay, I thought, I'll push out a digital lesson that the students could work on with their families, and the meetings will be used to clarify, affirm, or refocus so that the material from the standard is actually learned. I was told that I was not to use digital lessons because I didn't want to overload the students. So the impression is given that the important subjects get time to learn, but in PE, learning doesn't matter. And close your eyes for a second and think about 26, oh, sorry, 25 six-year-old children staring at you from a computer screen. Without being able to send materials home for practice and practical application, they will retain very little of the material. Also, when the hybrid model begins in September, the schedule calls for my PE activity time to be in 10-minute blocks. That puts me with student contact numbers that are in the 300-plus range for the day. That is not recommended by any guidelines from CDC, state, or the county. I think about, and think about the contact tracing nightmare if I do get infected. And lastly, research warns that children who possess inadequate motor skills are often relegated to a life of exclusion from the organized and free-play experiences of their peers and subsequently to a lifetime of inactivity because of their frustrations and early movement behavior. I want to work harder and better. I know how to do that. The district needs to stop putting roadblocks to stop me.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm going to mute your line. Thank you, Nancy. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Murray, followed by Jesse Beck. Murray, are you with us? There you are, Murray.
I want to echo the sentiment of most people that we don't have enough information to make a decision on what type of education would be best for our family. I currently have six kids. Two in middle school, one entering fourth grade, one going to TK, and then two, a preschooler who will not be in the school, and a two-month-old. The idea of trying to get assignments for virtual learning and then teach it seems overwhelming to do for four students while managing two little ones. But at the same time, I don't have enough information to understand if remote learning would be a good fit for my family either. I want to know if students can, if we choose the remote learning option, could students also participate in sports groups or web leadership activities that the Creekside Middle School would offer or other schools would offer? Also, is the, if they complete in understanding that the asynchronous learning in the remote learning option, if they finish their grade-level work since they can do it at their own pace, would they then begin the next year's work or are they just finished for the year? How would that work? Also, in Phase Two for the virtual school, who is providing the instruction? Is it a live video for the class or is it teacher-led? It would be wonderful to know if the elementary school and the secondary schedules could be at the same time having both the 10:40 or the AB option rather than the AM/PM, limiting the teacher's exposure as well as the students'. Thank you.
Thank you, Murray. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Jesse Beck, followed by Rebecca Stanek-Rikoff. Jesse, are you there?
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep, floor is yours.
Hi, this is Jesse and Kristen Beck. We are parents at Stanton Elementary. I commend, I commend you all for your efforts to provide these options to us in short order. I personally, personally believe that continuing the lives of each of our community members comes first and allowing our community members to gather in person comes second. Our next-door neighbor right here in Castro Valley passed away from COVID in March of this year. So we've experienced firsthand the ripple effect of a life ending prematurely. And folks should consider how that scenario would play out in a youth setting. It's beyond heartbreaking. So for one thing, we echo the request to tie Phase Two commencement to scientific data. With that said, there have already been a lot of logistic, logistical questions and comments from the other folks on the call. So I'll ask a question that might become critical a few months down the road. Maybe for the treasurer to consider. And maybe you already know the answer. If the available budget for the school district is not able to adequately support this school year's costs with all this new stuff, what is the most likely primary funding option available that would allow schools to continue to function in some capacity? Are we looking at federal support, local taxes, cutting some of these programs that we've been talking about all night? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Rebecca Stanek-Rikoff, followed by Tachi Kallas. Rebecca?
All right, I think I'm unmuted now. Thank you. I am a parent of two students who are going into second and fifth grade this fall. And I have to say, I'm a little concerned about the lack of detail combined with the high degree of certainty from the district so far and some of the planning. That seems a little backwards considering where we are in this current pandemic. Some of the questions I have that I feel as an elementary parent I need to have an answer to before July 20th include, you know, is, is, there's, there seems to be a lot of political pressure on schools to get back into the classroom as soon as possible. And given the existence of all this political pressure, is Alameda County Public Health officials, are they truly the only decision-maker? Or does the district have the power to say, even if Alameda County Public Health says you're good to go back to school, does the district have numbers and guidelines that they will be using to say, no, actually, it's not safe enough for us, even though, even though the county has given us the go-ahead? You know, maybe our effective is too high and we're not comfortable with this. I would like to know what those numbers are that the district is considering in their guidelines. Secondly, when we get to, if we ever get to a hybrid model, because I don't think we're going to get there September 14th, I just really want to wonder if you're concerned doing what Berkeley Unified is doing, which is really having those students outside as much as possible, which is probably the biggest thing you could do to decrease the risk to teachers and students by having students outside with masks, you know, for basically the whole school day. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. I'm going to mute your line. I just want to, okay. We'll have Tachi, followed by Dawn.
Hello, this is Tachi Kallas. I'm a parent with a, with a fifth grader and a eighth grader starting at Vanoy and Canyon. I'd like to thank the group for the hard work that's gone into this. It really is a difficult situation. So thank you for your efforts. I would really like to put out there that the AM/PM schedule for elementary is just really, really difficult for, for any family that doesn't have a dedicated stay-at-home parent. Please, please, consider moving that to a 10:40 schedule. That really is the only socially responsible option for getting kids back to school when it is safe to do so. I would also like to echo the concern about the secondary school period system. Kids moving back and forth and intermixing with insufficient time for cleaning, that, that is really problematic. So please, think through a better solution there. Maybe it's a fixed group of students and the teachers move around. Maybe there's some other solutions that work. With reduced schooling, please focus on the three Rs. And again, thank you for your efforts here.
Thank you, Tachi. Mute your line. Dawn? Dawn Myers, are you there? Floor is yours.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. I'm just, I am humbled and amazed that the community has really come in to share their concerns and thoughts and support. This is pretty amazing process. I am scared that July 20th is coming up soon. And I really hope with all these comments that have come in that the Alameda County Health Department can provide the much-needed metrics and data that is needed to say when it's safe to open. I understand that the board needed to put something out there, but it has caused unfortunately more fear than reassurances. We need those metrics to understand how and when it is safe to open. And also, I hope that in this report, there is commitment made that if we are lucky enough to get a vaccine this year, that that will be part of this plan that is put out for all the teachers, staff, parents, students to commit to our safety. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dawn. I'm going to mute your line. Now, we've hit our 60-minute time for public comment. I wanted to see if the board would be willing to extend another 10 minutes to allow for more speakers. Give thumbs up for those. Great, okay. I have a phone number, so I'm going to call you out. 834-115-28350. I'm going to ask you to unmute your line. Are you there? All right, we will move to the next public comment. I have Catherine Pi, followed by Regina Abanas. Catherine? Floor is yours.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have two children. One is entering kindergarten and one is entering second grade at Vanoy. And I was concerned about, we're interested in the virtual learning for the entire year, but I do have concerns about the amount of screen time that's going to be required. I know for older kids, online learning and being in front of a screen might be a little bit more feasible, but it's going to be really hard for little kids to sit still and then also the screen time. And so I'm, I don't work full-time and so I was interested in being more hands-on with their schooling to help lessen that screen time. So I wanted to find out if parents who are in that situation will be given a little bit more freedom, maybe to teach some of the lesson plans themselves, but still checking in with the teacher and limiting the screen time for the children.
Thank you, Catherine. I'm going to mute your line. Regina Abanas, followed by Paula. All right, Regina did. And she moved. There you go. Regina, are you there?
Sorry.
There you go. Yes.
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank everybody who's worked on, you know, just all the plans. You know, I know it takes a lot of work and I think like one of the things that, like about COVID, it's that we don't really know a lot about it. You know, the health coworker, I see it every day, you know, when I go to work. I feel like every day all of a sudden we're given like new, like, okay, today you wear a mask. Okay, now you have to wear a face shield and, you know, so I feel like, you know, I understand that it's hard and we have to be flexible and there's a lot of things that are unknown. But one thing is just like, I worry about like safety, not just for like, you know, kids, but also like about the teachers. I think like, one, I recognize that like AM/PM, the schedule's really hard for like healthcare parents who don't have the flexibility of, okay, my kid's off at 11, I'm going to come and pick him up. Like especially for myself, like I live, I work across the peninsula. So like, you know, it's really hard to just, okay, I'm going to leave work. Another thing is just, you know, I'm just like the teacher separating two groups. You know, the teacher is going to be the contact point, I feel like, right? In the morning, they're going to be with this student. Okay, they're going to be clean, but what is the teacher going to do in between that, you know? And then the second group comes, you know, that's just very worrisome for me. The other thing I guess is about virtual learning is just, you know, it's really hard to teach the kids, like especially, you know, when you're working and then trying to figure out how to teach, you know, the material to the kids. I think it would be really helpful if we got access to teacher content. If we could be, have like a link or something where we can go in and learn what we're supposed to help our kids with, especially with just virtual learning in general.
Thank you, Regina. Yes, that was a timer. Thank you, Regina. I'm going to mute your line. And I'm moving on to Paul, followed by Julia Runkel next. Paul, are you there?
Yeah, hello.
Hello, yes.
Hi, this is Akira Keeney-Moore with Paul. We have, we're parents of a child who goes to CVE and I just wanted to say first, you know, thank you to all you guys who put in the hard work to do all this research, come up with all these plans. I know you guys are just at the start of all the work that needs to be done. So I applaud you for what you guys have done up until now and listening to all these comments and even doing overtime. We really appreciate all that work you guys are putting in. I do kind of add to the voices saying, you know, like stressing safety. Obviously, that's kind of be the paramount, not only for the kids, but the teachers and for the community. So I really want to emphasize that that is kind of put on the forefront as far as the information that we get, as far as what kind of metrics you guys are looking at for when schools can be opened safely and even still, what metrics we're going to be watching for schools have to close down. Because the way it happened last time was such of like, oh, it's only going to be a couple of weeks and then boom, rest of the year. It was such a shock, the way it happened. If we could be a little bit clearer on the communication.
Just to get us prepared.
Yeah, a kind of what's coming up. So we know, okay, numbers are rising. Prepare yourself. Also, you know, the information that we'll need to make the decisions, I think, and with a lot of comments that were made, like if we do go with the online virtual option, one, if we can get some introduction to that before we have to make that choice. Two, if we sign up into that, if we don't like it, can we switch back and have a place available in the classroom? Also, for the classroom option, a little bit more information again about the safety measures that'll be going on. Other calls for cleaning. And also, as a military, I would see the 10:40 option put back on the plate, but I know it's a little late in the game. But thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you all, or both of you. I'm going to mute your line. And go to Julia Runkel. Julia?
Hey.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Hello, my name is Julia Beth Runkel. I'm the third through fifth grade SDC teacher at Stanton. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the time and effort CBSC has put into the preparation for the upcoming school year. I know this is a daunting task and I do not envy your position. There are many cases of COVID now, more than there have ever been in Alameda County, more than even when we started shelter in place. Anyone can become devastatingly ill from COVID-19 and students who are medically compromised are at increased risk for developing a severe case of the virus, as well as teachers. I know that the decision to send students in the special day class first comes back from a place of well-being and concern from the students that are in the most need of one-on-one in-person instruction. In all my time at Castro Valley, I felt an overwhelming amount of care, love, and support for the students in the special education program. However, I have to ask, if it is not safe for general education students to return to school, why would we send back the students in the special day classrooms, some of which have severely compromised immune systems? From my understanding of the proposed plan, students in the SCC classes are returning to school immediately for in-person instruction while the gened population is being protected through virtual learning. By returning to school immediately, SCC students and teachers are exposed to the potentially deadly virus for an extra month of in-person time. Also, what does this school day look like for special day classes? Will they be following an AM/PM model or will we be together all day? These are important things to keep in mind. I want to share that the teachers, we do not want an easy way out. This is hard. We would much rather be in person with our kids. And I just hope that we can make choices that are the best for the students and the Castro Valley.
Thank you, Julia. I'm going to mute your line. I'm going to move to one more comment from Tierney. Tierney, are you on the line, available?
Yes, hello.
Hello, floor is yours.
Um, so, hello. Dad! Hello, my name is Tierney Freeze and I'm going into seventh grade at Canyon Middle School. And a couple of questions I have are, one, would we be having masks? And would we be picking up our lunches and leaving? Or would be, or would we be leaving before lunch? Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tierney. And it looks like we are done with the period for our public commenting. And I wanted to thank everyone for their comments and I will be moving it back to, Harin, am I moving it back to you to say a few words before we take a vote? And you're on mute.
I would like to, I know, before you start discussing, you know, there will be a motion in a second, but I just wanted to respond to some of the things that came up because I know those are questions you probably want to know. But I want to go back to, you know, there's a lot of conversation about why in-person. If you go back to the beginning of our presentation, Senate Bill 98 and the Budget Act was passed based on that assumption that we have to get kids back to school as soon as possible, when safe, when the Health Department says you can. So now I'm looking at the Health Department guidelines and I'm reading directly from them. Again, we had a meeting today again. And it, it, it's written in their guidelines. It is our firm belief, based on evidence about the impact of COVID-19 in children and adolescents, that our children are best served by return to some level of in-person instruction hybrid at the beginning of the 2021 school year that balances optimal learning and student well-being and measures that address the safety of our school community. Now, they've also given us a whole lot of things to make sure that we are keeping everyone safe, which we have to follow and we will work with the Health Department on. So when folks are asking, what's the, they already told us why. And I'll read, I don't want to take too much time, but this is from Santa Clara. Why is it that they feel it's important for students to be back in school in light of all of the things that we heard? And I agree with how dangerous it is. They're saying COVID-19 disease prevalence among children is lower than in adults. Now, I'm not a doctor. I'm getting this from the doctors. And in children who contact, contract COVID-19 are more likely than adults to be asymptomatic or to have mild symptoms. And then they go into some other details. Furthermore, in several studies, children were less And then they go into some other details. Furthermore, in several studies, children were less likely to be the first case within a household. I mean, they've got reasons scientifically that they have used to tell us those things. So we actually, based on all of those, we should be starting school in-person instruction, but we have asked and said, we, in order to be ready, because what we're thinking is if we start in-class instruction in November, in December, in January, or in March, we may be back where we were this year. And we're going to be back to full-time distance learning. So our teams that worked, our planning teams, which also included teachers and administrators, said, please allow us to have a few weeks of virtual learning and teaching so that we can set the stage, we can get all this done. And then we know how to go back to it when we do need to and we have time to figure out all of the pieces we need to in order to bring children back. So that's why you see the kind of plan that you see. Now, I think there's a lot of discussion to be had about the different models. And I know you have a lot of questions and we heard a lot of great comments from community members, so I wanted to say those things. And in addition, there are screeners that the Health Department is actually working on. I know Nick McMaster might be online and I'm going to call him in just a minute to give us some feedback about that safety piece and the screen, and the screeners that, that they're working on. But there are lots of details to be worked out. All the safety issues that I heard tonight are things that we have either looked at or are looking at that, that we will have to discuss and bring back to the board, not whether we're going to do them or not. We, we just have to show, tell you all of the things that we must put in place. There were a lot of comments, I think there were some comments that perhaps I didn't make real clear when we were speaking at first. One question was, can, if we are on the hybrid or the virtual model, can we go back when things are back to normal? Absolutely. We also have said that at the trimester for people who are in the all-virtual could switch. It was just, we can't have, we are hoping not everybody will do that because we now have teachers who are teaching that group of students. So yes, all of those things are possible. I heard a couple of times, teachers are going to be cleaning and wiping, that's not what's happening. And I know that Suzy Chen can say more about that. There's just a lot. I wrote a lot of things down, so I will just add as we move forward. But there was another question that kept coming up and I've seen it and I've heard it and I think it's a great question. I want you to know that when we talk about the cohorts of teachers who are coming back for hybrid, we're not going to just say five students here, 10 students here, without looking at the family dynamics, without looking at the cohorts of teachers, without actually pulling data and seeing who has several children in what grades and which cohorts they will be in. So that's a really important part of the job. And that's why we need a lot of time to do all of these things so that we can put it in place, so that it meets the, as best as we can, the needs of our families and teachers. And when, I, I really want to thank Mark, our union president, for his comments. We have worked very well together, the plan. When the plan, when a plan is approved, we work on the impact of it and the effect of it through memorandums of understanding. And we want to make sure our teachers are safe, we want to make sure they have absolutely everything they need and our students are safe and absolutely have everything they need. So I'll stop there. If you want to go ahead and move and, and into discussion. And as you start, if you would like to ask some questions for staff to jump in and speak to, that's great. And Nick is now here and he can jump in later. Just let's wait for the next piece and then we'll have you speak. Thank you.
Next, this is an action item. Joe?
So Lavender, how would you like us to address this? Do you want to put the motion on the floor in pieces and do elementary and, and a preferred plan or sec? I'm happy to help you move it forward. I just don't know how you'd like it to be.
Um, I was planning on going all at one because it's one agenda item, but it looks like that there were a lot of comments that separate things out and I see a shaking head from Gary. So it looks like we will separate them out. Elementary versus secondary. So could start with elementary? Joe?
So again, I'm putting a motion on the floor for discussion. And the motion will be that we adopt the AM PM schedule for the hybrid learning and the virtual learning for the first part of the school year for elementary.
Thank you, Joe. The motion's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
All right, the motion's been moved and seconded. Open it up for discussion. And then I have a comment. I called on you.
Sorry, I didn't hear you say my name. So the the safety concern is a big one. And I'm glad we're going to be following the county public health recommendations. But I have concerns that that's going to be, that's pressured by other things. So I think when that time comes to transition, we need to talk about that. But since right now we're talking about approving the AM PM, I don't think this is the best way to serve our community. The, the lack of time to clean between the AM PM, the, the potential for teachers to be exposed to a whole classroom of students every day or for four days in a row. I, I don't think that's the safest thing to do for teachers. When my kids were little, every time they caught a cold at school, I got sick every single time. So even if kids aren't symptomatic or they're slightly symptomatic, they're going to bring that home to their families and, and to their teacher. So I think we need to rethink the, the model for elementary.
I had a comment, Gary, and then Joe. I just wanted to say, when we're thinking about this, because I know that safety is a central theme, I want everybody to, to, to just be on the same page about that we're not going back if things get worse. We're not going back if the county doesn't allow us. And, and, and safety and science will be used and utilized to ensure that that is what takes place. So I just want to make that clear for our families and our, our teachers. Safety is number one. And so I know that a lot of people don't feel that based on some of the comments, but I want to make sure that that's what we're going to be doing.
And I'd like to respond to that. Of course, safety is the first thing. I mean, that was on the first slide. Is that, you know, the, the first thing that we're thinking about is safety. But nothing is going to change between today and September 14th and, or November 14th or even March 14th. We aren't going to have a vaccine this school year. So I think putting, e- even if the rates of infection go down and the rates of hospitalizations go down and testing is widespread and barrier-free and, and there's adequate contact tracing, there is no risk-free way to do this. So I think we really have to think hard about how to reduce that risk in the timing of bringing students together and the number of students we're exposing our teachers to every day.
Gary?
Well, there, it, right now, there is no other option here. This has been presented more or less as a take it or leave it. So that does give me some concern. I'm still like the idea of an AB as opposed to an AM PM. Is this the only option that we have? That's one thing. And the second thing was, if it's possible to erase the September 14th date, I think it would be very helpful to just say we're not using that date at all anymore. Thank you.
Harveen, to respond?
So, yeah, two things. Again, September 14th was a date because it's about five weeks. Right now, when people ask, when is it safe to go back? We're hearing from the county Health Department. It's now, but we are just saying, let's extend it. So maybe it's not September 14th, maybe it's September 20th. But at that point, i-if things stay the same as they are right now, as bad as they are, they're telling us, you can go back. If things get really, really awful, they will say, you can't go back at all. So we have to listen to them. Today, we actually asked, like, when would it be that you would tell us we have to go back to all distance learning? No question, everything has to be shut down. She said, they, actually three doctors there, said it has to be extremely, extremely bad for us to do that because the cost of not having children in school has been too high. And based on all of the things that they have seen, it, the, the impact of having them in school, they have weighed all of that. And, and again, I'm not a doctor, I'm not saying that. So September 14th is not, doesn't have to be the exact date, but it has to be around that time so that we have enough time to do some hybrid in case we have to go back and forth, we can do it. And then we can say to the state, we actually are having a plan to come and bring our children back, again, based on SB 98. I also want to say, I know that there were a lot of people who said July 20th is too fast for them to tell us about the virtual. I think we'll be okay with extending that a little bit and giving people a little bit more time. Because, and the only reason we were thinking that is, once we know that, then, then Sherry and HR, Dr. Beetz can work on which teachers, right, are going to be teaching that all virtual and don't need, won't be coming back into the regular classroom and things like that. So it's just a little bit of time for us to plan that. Now, I don't see a problem if we move that to probably like June 25th or 26th or something like that. I can't even remember if June, June 25th might be, I don't know what day of the week it is.
Saturday.
Is it what?
Saturday.
Yeah, so maybe the Monday after that. And that's not a problem. And, and again, I want to reiterate, whoever chooses that option, and that's why, to trustee Theodore's point about things aren't going to change a whole heck of a lot for a while until we have a vaccine. And that's why we knew that there were families that were compromised health-wise, they had older family members or were really worried about coming back. And that's why we put together the virtual, all-virtual. Also giving them an option that if it doesn't work after the first trimester, we'll try to move them back in. So and, and trustee Howard, it's not, I mean, that's the option they have worked on that, that they felt in, in Ms. Rishichi and Mrs. Perator and Dr. Reiman can say some more, but that's what the, the group that worked on it preferred. But you as a board can, can, can tell us there are different options, especially since the high school is different and middle school is different. And if that's, you know, a decision that we need to do, we, we would go back and just figure that part out. But at least then we know which model and we can actually work on it and, and possibly make it happen. I don't know if any of you guys can jump in and say a little bit more.
Yeah, just, just to add to what Superintendent Amati was sharing earlier, time is of the essence. We have five weeks until the beginning of the school year. And so when I hear the concerns, especially around safety, around the details of planning, in order to get to the level of detail that we like to be at, we really need to have the structure in place so that we can talk with our maintenance operations and facilities folks and develop those plans so that we can work with teachers and HR and make sure we have personnel in the right locations. So the, the one piece that I would just add to what Superintendent Amati is saying is that giving us the support of letting us, giving us clarity in terms of what structures we have at this point allows us to start that detailed planning work now so that we can have the best plan and the safest schools for our students, for our staff and everybody possible.
Joe, and then Monica, her had her hand up?
Well, we started this evening with a conversation about safety and safety being our first priority. So I think a lot of the concerns that folks have, we're aware of and we know that they need to be addressed and we're going to be responsible stewards of their children and staff health. And we'll do that along with the guidance of the county health officers. But I see our responsibility tonight is to figure out high-quality learning and teaching. And what we're being asked, and Jason kind of said it for me, but what I was thinking is, we're being asked to provide the skeleton of what it's going to look like so the staff can figure out where they're going to go. And I think I really want to honor the work that the teachers and the administrators did to bring this to us because I'm not an educator and I'm not the one that recognizes the impact of what's going on with the students. But I know that I feel like there's been a tremendous learning gap since March to now. And I think we need to do everything we can to not only close that gap, but to give students the highest quality education we can for next year. And so I'm sitting here at my desk, I have the school opening planning group that Parveen was on from AXA. I have the uncertain road ahead from CSBA. And I have the COVID-19 school guidance from Alameda County Office of Education and the Health Department. I've read all of them. I've listened to dozens of seminars and workshops on this. And I truly believe that it's our obligation to give the staff the skeleton that they need to build. And I, it, it pains my heart that we can't make this work for everybody. I completely understand that this is really probably not going to work for anyone perfectly and that absolutely sucks. And I mean, the families, the students and the staff. But given the number of unknowns out there and what we need to do is figure out how to give the best high-quality education and teaching that we can. So I'm going to advocate that we move forward with the recommendation from the staff.
Monica, you had a comment, question?
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, I think we're kind of doing this backwards, but it's probably the way it had to be because you can't really define all the safety criteria or safety mechanisms you're going to put in place if you don't know what your plan is. But I think it would be, I think parent, as, as a parent and as someone who recently had a child in Castro Valley schools, I know I would feel better if I knew more about the safety, safety mechanisms that are going to be put in place. But I, I appreciate you can't really define those until you know what your educational model's going to be, so. But I, I took notes while in, you know, on two pages of notes and I know safety was a reoccurring theme. So I think the sooner we can come up with a plan and then define the safety mechanism that are going to be in place for students, the more that are going to be in place for students, the more comfortable parents will be about sending their children to school. And also, it was also a theme about that July twentieth date. People don't even know what we're going to do, what the plan is. I think we definitely should move that back and give people more time.
So I have a comment, but Parveen wants to respond, and then I'll hand it over to Joe after I'm done.
I was actually, at some point, I would like to call on Ms. Chan and then Mr. McMaster to say a couple of words about safety. But I want to say, if we came to you and said, this is our safety plan for this plan, I guarantee you there would be hundreds of holes. Because what we have to tell you is, we have to have all the safety precautions in place. That is a requirement by the Health Department for us to have. So regardless of what plan we have, we are going to then, like trustee Lee said, we're going to work on all those safety issues within that skeleton that that Ms. Los was talking about. So whenever you feel it's the best time for Ms. Chan to maybe say a few words about safety and Nick McMaster to talk about a couple of things.
Let me get my comment and Joe's comment, and then we can move over to them. I do want to, you know, re-ask the question. I know that it's been explained that, you know, we've had a lot of comments from public comment that maybe they weren't there in the beginning. And I know that there was a lot of comment from teachers around the elementary model. And and can you explain to us why not the ten four for elementary again? So we can kind of rehear that or or a different model of some sort? Why not something else versus the A M P M?
So what I what I would say is that when we talked about all the models, we did, we talked about and went through the same amount of questions, like, what are the pros? What are the cons of each of these models? And and spent hours doing that. The ten four model was actually the least favorite choice of the elementary team. They didn't, they thought that the way that it was structured, that it was an economic model versus being a really instructional model based on if the education system is working directly with the business system and that that moves together on the same on the same calendar. And so what they said was with younger kids, every day it was going to be like Groundhog Day. Every, I mean, not every day, but every time students came back to school, we were going to have to reteach and redo everything again because of this amount of time that was in between students being on campus. Now, with older kids, that might not be the same case. But with the take the TK through fifth grade, they really thought that 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 model just did not work. The A M P M model was the model that came to the top. Every time we talked, we talked A B as well. We talked, and it just came to the top every time when teachers were thinking, what's the best instructional model that I'm going to be able to connect with my kids the most from a social emotional perspective? I'm going to have the time to really go more in depth from a content perspective in English, Language Arts and Mathematics. The out, the amount of hours that I'll be able to spend with my time having direct live instruction and versus what happens with the A B or even with the ten four? They just saw that as a as a as a better model. You know, there's always the details to be worked out more specifically. We talked in depth with Gary and Gary and Suzie about the safety issues and the cleaning. I know there were some questions about, you know, between the A M, when the A M cohort leaves, do you really have enough time? And and what I want to say is that that Gary and his team really, they took some time in between the next time that we met. The first time we met, we said, let's ask that question. Gary said, I'm going to go out to every school site, I'm going to visit it, and we're going to work with the custodial staff and check, can we get that done within a ninety minute window? And he he came back a week later, or a week and a half later, and said, yep, we can get that done. And so that no, so that folks should not worry, every classroom can be done at everyone's schools from Palo to Indy. And I mean, we were, we were definitely asking the questions because the the elementary planning team was also asking the questions, can we actually really get that done? And so we made sure that the answer to that question was yes, because we knew where there would be safety questions about that. So the cleaning issue, I mean, that that that's really where we were. The, I think the elementary team did a fantastic job of going through every model deeply, asking deep questions, doing deep research, and the A M P M came to the top. That's the most I can share because that's, that's what we did.
Thank you, Leah. Joe? And then.
Earlier, I just wanted to say, I'd love for our community to understand that the decisions we are making are science backed and data backed. And I'm wondering if we could reinforce that by possibly answering their questions on our Q and A on the website, the questions that they asked tonight because we weren't able to respond directly. But I think that would be very helpful if they felt like their questions were getting answered and and saw what basis we're using. I don't know if you want two other board members to agree or or what.
No, we'll, we were going to update the questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so Doc, do you want to speak before Suzie and Nick? Or do you want to wait till after?
I just have a really quick comment. I appreciate what Joe said about our experts creating a plan and our job is to ensure high quality education. But this is a pandemic and we can't divorce safety from that high quality education. That's all.
Thank you. Suzie and Nick, I don't know who would like to go first.
Yes, so I'm just going to piggyback on on what Nea had mentioned earlier about cleaning. So we did have a meeting with with the group. And so one of the things that we really looked at is, like she said, it's, you know, within the ninety minute period, are we going to have enough time to to clean each classroom? And it's going to be the same level. I know the question that came up earlier is the A M P A M group versus the P M group. The concern is in the P M group, it's all this, you know, the the quality of air and also the cleaning is, you know, a poor compared to the A M group because of the cleaning and that happens at night. I do want to do, just let the board know and also the public that we did look at, it doesn't matter if it's an A M P M, it's the same disinfecting level, right? So the the same level of cleaning that we will be doing between the groups. So in the mid morning or afternoon, between, before the P M group comes in, we will do the same type of cleaning. That means in every single classroom, they will be, our staff will be going into classrooms, disinfecting, they will also, you know, that looking, disinfecting chairs, desks, doorknobs and high touch areas. Throughout the day, our staff will be go cleaning the restrooms as well. So it's not just a one time they go in and clean, but the, you know, the restrooms and also the other areas, common areas, those are the things that we will be focusing on while students are in the classrooms. Another comment earlier was about the HVAC. So the heating, this is heating, ventilation and air conditioning. The filters, are they going to be replaced? They, yes, we will replace the filters. This, we will replace the, replace them more often than what we have in the past. We obviously prior to COVID nineteen, and that's the plan that we have. And also, in terms of fresh air to the HVAC. So the, our HVAC system can be set with the fan running all the time to get more fresh air in. This is actually part of the new HVAC code. And so that's what we will be doing. So it's 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 a change that we will be implementing in our in our system. And that can easily be done. So that means it's just a matter of setting it up so it, every fresh air can just go in all day.
Nick, did you have anything that you wanted to add as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd I'd like to jump in and I'm not going to provide an exhaustive list of all of the things that have been dominant in conversations with with staff as we've been planning and and looking at reopening. You know, just following up on Ms. Chan, she did speak very much about, almost entirely about disinfecting, which I know that they have a good plan to accomplish. But there are several other things that her department is putting in place that she didn't speak to, including CDC recommended hand sanitizers, extra hand washing stations, plans for disinfecting bathrooms. So I know Ms. Chan and and Mr. Krebs are are looking at that in a very expansive way. What I can comment on is the processes that we are developing to be able to put in place in conjunction with the county health department's recommendations. So if we looked at that, I think for starters, what I would say is a philosophical change. I think when we were in a non pandemic, regular school atmosphere, there was this natural pressure applied about making it to school, the pressure to come to school, you know, almost erring on the side of coming to school, even if you didn't feel one hundred percent. And that's clearly going to have to be a philosophical change. And we're going to need to work with our community, our teachers, our families to to preach the personal responsibility that will be instrumental in keeping everyone safe. You know, so supporting and accommodating families when they err on the side of keeping their student home to keep others safe, I think is going to be a huge undertaking for us. What I would say additionally is, besides what the county health department is recommending for us, the face coverings, they're supporting us, or they are to support us with a a pre-screening. This is, these are all in the before school phases. Recommending at home temperature checks. We are, we are looking at the the control, the governing of entering campus. You know, we are looking, as the cleaning and disinfecting was spoke to, but even in the school day where there are, you know, processes for practicable, practicable distancing. I know that there were comments earlier about how are we going to make sure that we're spaced out? Those are certainly, those are certainly plans that are being finalized, discussed. There were also comments about, you know, what do we do if there are symptoms and there are positive tests? Those are, those are all things that we are, you know, well aware of in the process of, you know, what's recommended and what's practical that we're, that we are, you know, finalizing. We have recommendations from the county health department when it comes to, you know, how to respond to to symptoms, especially if we find out about a positive diagnosis before the county actually has the opportunity to tell us, which is, which is normally who we would expect to hear us. So I know that we plan to present to the board next week more expansively on all of these concepts and more more specifics. And I'll look forward to providing more information then. But I do, I do want to say that our leadership, I think, has been so incredibly proactive and expansive, including, I know Ms. Ms. Superintendent Amati, you know, is working directly with the county Department of Public Health and wants them to look over our rollout plan, you know, to to give us feedback and spot out any holes. So we're, we're, we're excited to find a way to rise to the challenge and do so in a safe, certainly a safe way.
Thank you, Nick. I have a comment, and then I'll hand it over to Joe. As we're going forward in this plan and there issues do arise, like we planned it a certain way and we realize, what what is our ability to adapt and modify? And what's our feedback loop?
You mean for for the board or for the?
I just mean in general. So let's say, like, like, you know, we have our normal procedures for complaints, but this is a little different, right? We're going to be built into the plan of the the health and safety plan of, you know, if X Y Z occurs, how do we modify our our plan? And and how do we make sure we get teachers back involved? How, you know, work with our unions? If, you know, there's going to be changes along the way as we learn what works and what doesn't.
Yeah, first of all, we're going to work, I know Dr. Beats has already started with our team, working with our union. So we've already started working and will continue to work to figure out all of these things. And in addition to that, our principals are going to be very closely working with their staff. We're going to be all in touch with everybody at all times. I mean, our principals haven't really left and they're coming back sooner than they've ever done. So we'll work together and we'll make sure. And if there there are issues, we address them, I mean, immediately. And if we know about them, if somebody else wants to let us know. Our goal is to put the best plan in place, but we know there may be questions, there may be things that aren't working as well, and we adjust.
Joe?
So I feel my position has been misrepresented in that I am totally and completely aware that this is a pandemic. But I also believe that I started my statement out by saying, safety is our first priority. However, our parameters for safety are going to be determined by the Health Department. And we have to adhere to them. So I don't see that as gray area. What I'm saying is that our focus needs to be on high quality learning and teaching. And the safety is a huge part of it, but that's not what we do as a school board.
Are there any more comments from the board? All right. This is, all right. So given that there are no more questions and comments, there it's, the motion's been moved and seconded. And all those in favor of, let me go back to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, of moving to a elementary A M P M model? Please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
I, I'm opposed.
Motion passes four to one. We'll move on to secondary. And so there are two options in secondary. So the motion that will be, have to be moved will be based on the motion you're moving to suggest which plan to discuss. Gary?
A move that we use.
You went mute.
Sorry. A move that we adopt the A B model.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Discussion. Joe?
So as I've already stated, I'm not the educational expert here, but I am a parent of four children. And I see the four ten model as being very hard to keep my students focused and continuing to do their work if they have ten days in between actually attending school. And again, all of the safety factors and everything, I think there's conversation about whether teachers would be moving classes, students would be moving classes, all those kinds of things have to be figured out. But I, in listening to Vivian and Nea tonight, I'm feeling like the A V model is the best option at this time.
Sorry, I was turning the word packet. Dot, and then Monica?
So I am supporting the ten and four model. And it, again, I don't think we, I I think our professionals can provide high quality education, no matter what model we choose, because they're fantastic. But I can't divorce safety from that. And in my opinion, the ten four model is a safer model because you have a longer period of time where your kids, where the students are not on campus if there's any symptom development. And there's just less time for exposure.
Monica?
I think the A V model is is more similar what the kids are used to because they're used to having block days. But I do think it would be useful to have staff or Parveen or somebody speak to how they're going to clean classes in between periods. speak to how they're going to clean classes in between periods.
Ms. Chan can speak to that.
Yeah, so for this option, we are not able to clean in between periods just because we don't have enough time. It's not like the A and A and PM model where we have a block of 90 minutes to clean each classroom. For this one, we don't have that.
Yeah.
And that's why in that option we put in on Wednesday is the scheduled deep cleaning. And that's when we will do that. And obviously in addition, at nighttime, that's the time when we will be doing the cleaning. But in between periods, no.
Jason, Parveen, you have?
Dr. Reiman, go ahead and now I'll say something after that.
I was just going to add, that's, that's the same challenge for any secondary model. There is no, so the 90-minute period of time that's required to clean the campus, in fact, the custodial team let us know would take more than that amount of time for Castro Valley High School. We wouldn't be able to put a 90-minute block of time in between each class with students taking six classes, even having it and having three classes per day. It's not possible to do three classes a day with the 90-minute period of cleaning in between. Also, thinking of students with 90 minutes in between each class, where would the students go during that period of time? So it's, it's definitely a challenge that we're going to need to figure out in terms of how it's being handled. We know this is high on the radar for CVTA, it's high on the radar for us. It's something that we're thinking about seriously. And it's, it's, you know, it's an issue that's not unique to Castro Valley Unified either.
I just wanted to thank you for all of that. But one of the things, oh, am I on?
You're on. No, I was just mouthing to Monica that I see her.
One of the things that we really discussed a lot with the county health department, honestly, for like the last four months, has been exactly that. Because it's a lot easier to keep children in elementary school in cohorts because they're, they have the same teacher. But by its nature, secondary education doesn't work that way. So when they, when we first started and they were like, well, put 20 kids together and we're like, well, that's not how it works. So they, they understand that we, that children will be moving and the direction and the criteria is try to limit as much as you can, which is why all the school districts are looking at three at block periods instead of six periods a day. So the kids aren't going all over the place. And they're looking at Group A and Group B. So we're just reducing the number of cross-pollination, but we're definitely not able to eliminate it, even with elementary or any, anything else. But, but it is a lot more difficult with secondary. And they understand, one of the things that is helpful is older children can be taught a lot more to be a lot more responsible. For example, things that came up is perhaps something on their desk that they have with them that they take, I mean, these are all different ideas that are coming up. So whatever we can do to help our older children to actually follow some rules and keep everything cleaner and do all of that, we will do. Because it would be a lot harder to ask a first grader to do that than it, than an older student. So it is, it's just, it's problematic, no matter how you look at it. We just have to do a lot of work and put a lot of things in place. And then we're going to learn from each other from different districts as well. We're not in isolation.
Monica, you have a comment? And then I have a comment question.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the 10-4 model in our board packet. I'm assuming then that one, you can't clean in between classes either, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because, because I guess then I'm starting to think, well, at least the AB of A, you have a deep cleaning and then you have B come in as opposed to A and they, the cooties stay there all day or they clean at night?
Yeah, at night they clean. Suzie?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. At night, we will have a nightly cleaning for whether it's the A and PM with the elementary, right? So we're doing the, we mentioned earlier, for the secondary level, same thing. It's the nightly cleanup in addition to the Wednesday deep cleaning.
Okay, it's just during in-between classes on an Ivy High School schedule, you cannot clean?
Right.
And my, my question slash comment is, I mean, we have, we will have these kids be wearing masks.
Yes.
And they will be socially distanced six feet apart, right? That's the guidance. What about washing hands? I mean, we talked about washing at certain periods, like maybe if you have to walk into 600 Hall, you have to wash your hands, you know? Or if you have it in a classroom or certain intervals where in order to enter a certain place, you have to wash your hands so that you know that you're getting rid of the viral load. And that way, you're clean and you're covered. And then I don't know what we're going to be able to be doing to wipe down desks before somebody else uses them or what does that look like for students? And that's where it gets kind of down to the nitty-gritty, which I'm sure you'll be working on, but that's what kind of worries me.
Yeah, so what I want to say is I can tell you that Suzie and Gary are working with all of the different groups in Alameda County who have the same positions to come up with as many different ways as we possibly can to keep kids safe. Like some of the things you talked about, I'm sure have come up. I heard a few more today. So those are things that they're going to work on. But, but if, if Ms. Chan has any more to add, and I know Nick has, might have heard some things. But those are exactly the things that they're talking about. Yeah, so you mentioned the hand washing stations. In addition to what we, that, you know, the, the restrooms we have are going to actually put additional hand washing stations with the common areas as well as have hand sanitizers in each classroom for elementary and then a spray bottle in each classroom for the, for the secondary. Another thing that we've actually just ordered are the touchless hand sanitizers so that where students can just, you know, put their hand out and, and, you know, sanitize, then they can sanitize their hands. And we are going to place those strategically where, you know, the common areas as well. So those are the things that we are, we've already ordered and will be receiving before school starts.
Gary, did you have your hand up or are you just waving? No hand up? Okay. No, you're waving. Okay.
Dr. Reiman, Dr. Reiman was, I think you guys were talking about some other 10-minute more for washing hands and things like that too. So all of those things will be worked out, worked out.
Are there any other comments by the board? Questions? Monica?
And I guess it's, it's still being worked out, like, you know, how you separate kids in chem labs and those. It just occurred to me, like the engineering building, we just have all the, the big computer lab with all the key, shared keyboards and stuff.
Lots, lots of details to work out, which is really why it's, it's going to take a long time for us to put all this in place. And remember, that's one of our justifications for having a few weeks. And we didn't say a lot of weeks, but a few weeks, please, to get all this done. So remember, we start with distance learning, we have the next few weeks, and then we have that so that we can get in a really good, solid place. But like you said, computers, doorknobs, all sorts of things.
Now, again, I'm going to ask again the same question that I asked for elementary. You know, reasoning, I mean, you guys gave us two options. And you said that they, they both worked. You know, we had preferences listed from the parents, we had preferences talking to the union. What are, what are the differences between the two? And can you tell us again why? Just so those that are still on the phone that were not on earlier?
Vivian, did you want to explain?
Yeah, so the, the group, when we asked them to vote on which model they liked best, the AB model was a little larger than the 10-4 model, but it wasn't overwhelmingly larger. When we looked at the parent surveys, the 10-4 model was the lowest in parent expression that they wanted that. AB was by far a much larger proportion of parents wanted the AB model. So we, the group decided that they would accept whatever the board decided because it was not totally evenly split, but not really, one group was much, much higher than the other. So the disadvantages with the 10-4 model instructionally is the amount of time that's between when students go. So there, but it's also the advantage in terms of the virus and the way that it works. So that's where the 10-4 model came from originally. But it came from a place where everybody practiced the 10-4 model, including the workplace. So whole families were on the 10-4 model. So in other words, there was a 10-day gap between, everybody was in the house for 10 days so that if anyone became symptomatic, then it would come up before they went back into society. But obviously, that's not going to happen here in terms of the families and everybody. Everybody's on their own schedule. It doesn't reduce the amount of exposure for teachers either way because they are still exposed to everybody every two weeks, either in two days at a time with a gap or in four days at a time with a gap. So the model is, the models are fairly similar in many respects. And I'm sure Dr. Reiman can add more, more to that.
You did a great job.
I mean, I feel like this is a no-win situation. I do lean towards this one with similar feelings with Dot. I mean, if it was, if the teachers felt kind of like close and I, I know that parents have a really hard time and I think we're all going to have a really hard time anyway. And it's really hard to select a plan that works for everybody. But being able to have this distance and time to be able to mitigate potential, you know, delays and if there is an exposure, how do we do contract tracing in a, in a more meaningful way? I think that that, I mean, obviously I like that better.
Joe?
So Lavender, I understand what you're saying, but my concern would be, would still be that the staff and the teachers are in that situation and are, the students are changing with them. So I know Linda Granger, the ROP superintendent's daughter, has COVID. And we talked a long time today where the daughter has to be isolated for 14 days and then no symptoms. And then Linda has to be isolated for another 14 days. And it's really complicated and hard. And while I respect the 10 days, it, it doesn't fit what I understand the pattern of what COVID is doing right now. It's, it's the too weak idea. And I'm not the health expert either. But I just think for parents working with their students and having their student not have any direct instruction for 10 whole days would be very difficult. And again, this isn't going to work for everybody or anybody and it's very hard.
Dot?
So the 10-4 doesn't necessarily fall into the quarantine time that you would have if you were identified as actually having an exposure. What the 10-4 does, it just allows more time for, for symptom development. So symptoms can develop anytime between two and 14 days from what we know. So this allows for that to potentially happen if there was an exposure and for, for that A cohort of students to be home for a certain number of days if symptoms develop, rather than, you know, coming and exposing, coming and, and spending more time outside of their homes. That, so it doesn't necessarily mean that, that we're, they're quarantined and it doesn't track with public health orders about quarantine, but it's just allowing for time for symptoms to arise if they're going to arise.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? All right, the motion as first and seconded is for the secondary AB model. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say aye.
No.
No. Motion passes three to. That does conclude our meeting of the board.
I, could I just say what we're going to do next? We are going to bring back an item with all sorts of information on transportation, child nutrition and all of that. Again, not complete, just to kind of give you a skeleton of that, just for information. But, but I want to thank everybody who participated and, and the board for all of your comments and great questions and the staff for doing a fabulous job.
Can I add, can I add one thing that I didn't add earlier that I wish I had? I just want to reiterate my appreciation for all of the teachers, administrators, counselors and certificated staff that were part of the planning team. Many of them, it's af, almost all of them, it's after the end of their work year. They really worked hard. As you can see, these are really complex issues. And also Vivian or Ms. Perator and Ms. Rashichi for their work. And the board, thank you also for, okay.
Although it seems I didn't agree with the decisions tonight, I am so grateful for all of the experts that we have had providing input in this and developing these plans. And I have every confidence that our students will receive the highest quality education that we can provide during this horrible pandemic. And like Neta said earlier in her comment, that this is, nothing is ideal here. So, thank you.
Joe, do you have any closing statements? No. Gary, do you have any closing statements? Monica, do you have any closing statements?
Just quickly to thank the staff for everything they've done and all the information they provided. And I know we asked a lot of hard questions and hopefully a lot of the parents got most of their answers and the rest, we can put in the Q and A. And Parveen, I took a lot of notes, so if you feel like you're short.
Yeah, actually, if you take a picture of it and send it to me, that'd be great. But we have FAQs already started.
It's in my note hand, so I'll have to.
That's okay. But just, just, I hope that people can be patient and give us a couple of days to put them online. But we'll do our best to get it. I know I'm sending something out tonight with just general information of what happened tonight and then we'll definitely update the frequently asked questions. Thank you so much.
So with that, I do want to thank our families who called in. I am sorry for the, everything that everyone is going through. This is a tough situation for everyone, no matter where you are and whatever walk of life that you have. We know this is complex. We thank the teachers, we thank CSCA for their commitment to keeping our schools safe and clean. And I'm really looking forward to seeing more of the safety details that we can help our families, our teachers, our students and the district learn more about how to manage their safety in this horrible, horrible, awful time. So with the lovely news that, all of that that goes with today that we had and there's a lot of work here, a lot of positive energy.
and there's a lot of work here, a lot of positive energy and commitment to working together. So I appreciate you all and all that you're doing, all that you will be doing. And I wish you a good night. Thank you.